We're gonna go ahead and get our meeting started here this evening. Ms. Kinzer, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Parker. Ms. Kinzer's here, Mr. Moore, Mr. Sands, Mr. Fulbright, Mr. Hooper, uh, Mr. Howell, uh, Mr. Lindsey.
Ms. Irvin.
Okay. Who's that? Okay. And there's Ms. Irvin. So we are all here that are present.
That, that, that is very a true statement.
And we're really here.
Those that are here are present. Thank you. Do we need to have a vote to adopt this agenda? I can never remember for a work session. Okay, that's what I felt. Alright, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Hickman. You have the introduction of new Murray County Public School Principals.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I'm proud to present our, uh, new principals that were appointed this summer. And, uh, I'll have them, they're sitting behind me, but I'll have them stand up so you can put a name to a face. We'll start with Ms. Tanya Potts, who is now at EA Cox. Ms. Melissa Harkreter, who is now at Mount Pleasant Middle School. Mr. Mike Kennard, who is at Battle Creek Middle School. Ms. Carol Ann Gent, who is at Woodard. And Ms. Kara Skaggs, who is at Whitthorne Middle School. And then where's Mr. Kevin? Oh, there he is. He didn't want to sit with the other ones. Mr. Kevin Heedy, who is at Central High School. And then Mr. Gaines will announce one of our other district new employees.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Pleased to announce, uh, Mr. Jeff Ritchie, who is now the new People's Services Director.
Thank you.
Happy to have everyone on board.
Definitely, very happy. Congratulations to all of our new principals and district staff. Um, it's gonna be an interesting year at the Fulbright House. Both my children have new principals this year, so, uh, I couldn't think of a better transition that they're looking forward to going into a new year. So, thank you all. Appreciate that. Yeah, definitely. Give him a hand. Alright, we have, we'll move on to our consent items. Is there anything under minutes, school trips, or use of facilities we need to discuss? Seeing nothing? We will let the principals head out. They've got, uh, a very full year ahead of them. Alright. Give me one second here. Alright, under new business, finance, uh, Mr. LaConan.
Good evening, Board members. How are you?
Great.
Uh, we have a budget amendment for our title budget. Uh, th- this is federal programs funds, so I'd, I'd like to ask for that to be on consent for next meeting.
Any objection to that? Okay, that's consent.
The monthly financials for June are attached. These are not our final year-end numbers. We have, uh, multiple payrolls that we have to put back, uh, as far as wages payable, journal entries. Uh, they look really good right now because those entries are not on there. Uh, we typically lose, um, money in the month of, uh, June because of that, having to put back some July expenditures. I expect us to still be right around, uh, close to a surplus or a small deficit. So, um, that's where I expect us to be. If there are any questions on the financials, uh, feel free to ask, but this is incomplete. We will close the books, uh, around the first week of August. The deadline is, uh, the last day in August. And, uh, we'll give a renewed, uh, set of books for June at that time and report to you whatever our surplus or deficit ended up being.
Okay, thank you. Uh, update on Cronos?
I have some good news and, and bad news on Cronos, as far as that's concerned. Uh, from the very beginning, from our first meeting when in March that we had with Cronos, uh, we had expressed that we wanted employees to be able to use this the very first day of school. You know, the very first day on campus. And, um, this is where the vendor really fell short. Um, but at the same time, I want to rather do it right, rather do it correctly, have it set up for our school district to where, when we do implement it, that it is a hundred percent correct and, uh, accomplishes all the goals the board and employees deserve to achieve. And, uh, it's just not there yet. And they said, I, early July, I started rushing them 'cause right now, uh, food service is on paper time sheets and they haven't been on those for a while. But, uh, they have known, they knew about that deadline for months and weren't able to hit it. But at the same time, uh, when I really yelled at them (laugh) to hurry it up, uh, they said, "We fear that we're going to really mess this up if we start to rush." And I'd rather do it correctly the first time than do it wrong because I've, I've seen what the penalties of an incorrect software where implementation can result in. So, we're taking our time. They gave us a timeline with HR of August fifteenth. They gave us a timeline for time in attendance of September fifteenth. Um, I told them those were not good deadlines because they'll start using Cronos, go on fall break, come back, you know, have issues starting up again. So, we're gonna work around fall break and set a good time. Uh, the staff, on, on my team, it's a train-the-trainer mentality. Uh, that's how they get the training out. My staff will go out to schools. We will also be there for any calls, um, and help people out. So we're developing trainings. Uh, we did put that on Principal's Retreat Agenda for October to have time in October to go over this. And then we'll kick it off, uh, later this semester. Uh, maybe first thing next semester, but we wanna make sure it's set up correctly. So some bad news that it is delayed, but like I said, I'd rather do it right than rush it and screw it up. So...
Thank you. Any questions on, Mr. Lindsey?
A few questions I've had from people, um, teachers, will they be clocking in via their computer? Um, and then like remote, especially bus drivers that don't come in to, um, to the bus garage every day, e- exactly how all that kinda will look for those people?
There's a bajillion ways to clock in. I, I hate to say it like that, but, um, there are Cronos kiosks. They're already installed at schools, uh, that people can clock in and check their time off balances at. There, you can also clock in and out at a computer. Uh, you can clock in and out from a cellphone. You can also call in when you're leaving your home. That's what we actually do for some sheriff's deputies. And that is a service in addition, uh, to Cronos that can clock in via telephone. Uh, we also have geo-tracking to where if someone is stationed at a school and they work at that school every day and they try to clock in from their home, that it can be denied. So the options are there, uh, and can meet, um, what those needs. So yes, um, I would expect a teacher to clock in on a phone or on a laptop. And it's actually a check-in feature, not a clock-in. Uh, so they'll check in when they get there and check out when they leave. And lunch will be automatically recorded for them. Uh, I know that Wayne deals with, uh, punch-in and punch-out at lunchtime. And that probably, uh, becomes a headache, having to fix those, you know? Get an email, "Hey, I forgot to clock out for lunch. Can you fix my time?" So, we saw that that would be a colossal problem with eighteen hundred people. Um, I think I've addressed every way to clock in. Uh, bus drivers that are leaving from their home, when they're in that bus and, and they've got county property, they're on the clock. So we're working with them. If they don't have a smartphone, uh, but they do have a regular phone, that would be an option for them. So, um, any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Moore?
So, um, to go back to kinda the, the delay on getting this done, I know one of the reasons we went with Cronos was supposed to be because it was supposed to be a smoother transition and they were supposed to have this up to date. I guess I just wanna make sure, even with the move-back dates, are you comfortable if they actually have this covered? And they know what the delays specifically are and that they can resolve that and be ready on the, whatever date we hold them to?
Yes, I'm confident in that. And in addition to that, they are building the system to fit our district. Um, and that has become a little more complicated when we have stipends and we wanna track the, uh, exact hours of those stipends. Um, as you guys know, over the summer, we hand-entered almost two thousand of those. And they went through a paper approval process, uh, multiple times when it could have been, uh, digital and a little more instant and, um, easier to do, but also more accurate. So, in accommodating that, as well as other types of stipends that are annual stipends, that added to the build process. And, uh, you know, we're trying to accommodate all of our policies that we have and operate within those. So, they're building it to spec. And when we find stuff, uh, we pointed out, "Hey, that's not how that is supposed to work." Uh, and I don't expect it to be a hundred percent perfect when it's installed, but we're trying to get as close as possible so that we catch a lot of these problems on the front end before it actually occurs in schools.
I guess the other thing I would ask, and this is kinda for staff as well as you, to make sure, I mean, since we do seem to have a little bit extra time, just to make sure we communicate as clearly with employees as possible. Uh, we tend to kinda fall short on that at times, uh, as a district. So I would hope we would use that extra time to make sure that, I mean, this is a big change. I get it, for, for quite a few employees. It's a change in how things operate. So I would hope we could just use the time to make sure we are perfectly crystal clear on how this works for them and make it as smooth a transition as possible.
When it's, uh, built, you know, then, then we'll have more to show, more to train, more to communicate about. Uh, and that's about three months out, but we'll communicate as much as possible.
Thank you.
Ms. Irvin?
So, uh, my understanding of Cronos is just to, to help manage people, and I get that. Um, I was not aware, when we talked about it earlier, that it was a clock-in and clock-out system. And honestly, I have mixed feelings about that because, one, I feel like we're hiring professionals. And I feel like with hiring professionals, we're also paying them a salary. And I know (laugh), and I know every situation's different, but when you hear like they can just clock in via their phone, I mean, I don't want a teacher fooling with their phone, you know, driving, trying to get it up as they're coming to school. And then I know the realities of, I know when I talk, there's people, I mean, you're, you're, even walking in the parking lot, you're dealing with parents, you're dealing with kids coming up, and it, depending upon the age, but I, I don't know what kinda measure of accountability, but I feel like if I was, um, a teacher, I would almost consider that insultive. Especially, um, I, I'm, I'm not a fan of that because like I say, they're salary positions. So can someone help me understand why we're now gonna make our employees clock in and clock out?
So, uh, from my standpoint, I mean, I check in and check out, and I'm salary. Um, and that's to track off, track my time off accurately. If I'm, um, taking a half-day, then it shows that I checked in and I checked out, and that was accurately accounted for. But we gained input before we move forward with who would clock in, who would... And clock in and clock out is, is different from check-in and check-out. Clock in and clock out means if you clocked in and you worked there for six hours, for example, you're getting paid six hours times an hourly rate. Check-in is just saying, "Hey, I was here," and it registers also, uh, the supervisor will have access to see who is in the building, who is actually there for safety precautions. Uh, but by no means are they being paid for the time recorded on the check-in and check-out. Only for the time off that they use. Uh, they would be paid their same salary as long as they met the minimum requirements. Uh, the system will also not let them go below, um, basically you can't submit vacation time that you don't have. Uh, so it'll, it'll say, "Hey, you don't have that much vacation," or you don't have, they actually don't have vacation, but you get what I'm saying. Sick, you don't have that much sick, I'm sorry. This is how much you have, you can take that. Um, but check-in and check-out is just showing that they existed at that school that day and helps us track, if the supervisor sees that a, there was a day that wasn't checked in or checked out for, they can ask that employee, "Hey, were you off or were you here? Uh, did you submit a time off request for this and work together on that?" Um, but w- we asked, uh, Central Office, you know, Michael and, and Scott, and, and had them populate a document on how they wanted this to occur, and, and that was the response that we got. And it's just, uh, one, for safety. It's a check-in, check-out. So if they check in and check out and it says seven hours, or it says six hours, or something like that, they're getting paid the same. Uh, but, you know, I would, I would defer to them on why they prefer it's check-in.
Well, thank you for explaining, Doug.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Alright, number four. Bid two-two-zero-zero-eight. We will move that to consent. Alright, instruction. Thank you, Mr. LaConan, for your report. Alright, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, we have the, uh, an S R three draft spending proposal, uh, before you. Uh, our, uh, our intent is to, uh, uh, get, get an idea of big rocks that we can go ahead and start, uh, completing the application. As you know, there's, uh, a lot of processes in the E Plan, uh, when you complete that application. So if we know that, you know, we're, uh, if we know where to go in those directions, we can start completing that application and getting it done so that we can, uh, get the, uh, approval in E Plan. That's, you know, that's our, it's always one of our steps, uh, getting it approved by the, getting it, uh, tendered approved by the board, seeking approval in the E Plan, bringing back the actual real budget to you for approval, and then execution of the actual grant. And, and I'll entertain any questions, uh, that we have. Oh, okay. You wanna bring it up? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the CTEI.
Well, we'll come back to it. Let's, let's stay on the one we're on for right now.
Okay.
Is there any specific questions? Any? Oh, Mr. Lindsey?
Uh, I, I just have a couple of questions about, uh, a couple of items that are proposed. Um, the, um, Grow Your Own program, um, could you just give us a little feedback on what exactly that is? Who, who produces that?
Uh, we, we've attempted in the past to partner with the, with universities to be able to offer courses through a university using our folks or some of their folks to be able to, um, take some of our employees who are interested in, uh, gaining a teacher degree to be able to, uh, help them obtain that. In ex, so it is in exchange for, hey, we offer you, we help you get your education in exchange for some years of employment. Uh, uh, we have, uh, tried to work through, last year, we, uh, got in a project with MTSU and several, um, uh, several other districts trying to be able to, uh, build math and science teachers. Uh, COVID happened and, and it just didn't, it didn't, it didn't get off the ground. So, we have, uh, tentatively met with Columbia State, you know, they have the two-plus-two program. Uh, our, you know, our intent is to look at, we have some educational assistants who already have degrees. We have educational assistants who are interested in, uh, getting their teaching degrees. So we would, uh, examine those, that group of people as to where they are in terms of their transcripts. Um, and then try to look at, set them up for a coursework. Um, we know that, you know, some people would be, we, we might be able to obtain funds from the state of Tennessee. We may not have to expend these funds. We may be able to extend drive to fifty-five funds. They're still out there. So, uh, the proposal there is to look at is if we funded, if we have funded tuition actually for twenty candidates to carry them through till they were able to get their degree. That's, that's the proposal. Um, yeah, we would have to continue to work through that. Um, you know, I can't tell you right now that we're actually gonna spend a million dollars in that. We would have to bring that back to you. But we would actually budget that to begin with to say, "Hey, here's our, here's the way we would do that to begin with." I just wanted to give you a shell of what would happen.
Let me add to that. What we're looking at is, as you know, it's getting tougher and tougher for every district, not just our own, to hire teachers. They're just not out there. What we do, we have, is a lot of committed folks that are in these support roles that have incomplete degrees or degrees in something else or want to pursue, but just, uh, do not have the avenues. We've already talked to Dr. Connie, uh, uh, Dr. Smith out at the Columbia State. And, you know, we're very excited about this. And what else this will do too, is it's gonna help us. We have a diversity plan that we have to turn into the state by November. It'll help us also to link and capture maybe some diverse populations to bring them into the teaching role too. One of the areas where we're really short on in our teachers, and this is across the state, is specifically in our Hispanic area. And we do have, uh, quite a bit of number of Hispanic, um, EAs such as that that we can try to grasp with a Grow Your Own program where it will be a easy way for them to stay basically on course to get this degree. And then they'll have to, if we've involved the money, sign a contract to teach with us for so many years, to receive these services.
If, if nobody else has any questions about that, when I have a question about another topic.
Uh, we'll go to Moore and come back to you.
So, well, I, I have some statements on that, but I, it's questions first. So can somebody tell me in a concise way how this fits into an, an actual, a plan to do, improve the education in this district, just as a whole?
So, the, um, the, the federal government provided these funds to, uh, give districts, uh, if you look at the first, uh, in the review there at the top, uh, the first round of funds were, of course, just addressing the impact. The second round was, uh, supporting reopening. Uh, the third round is just continuing to address those impacts. Uh, schools have had impacts and, uh, we know teachers are resigning, teachers are retiring. Uh, uh, we've had impacts in terms of, uh, we're having to address quality of life in terms of ventilation. Uh, there's just a gamut of things that, as a result of the coronavirus, that, you know, that we have this opportunity to use these funds to address. It's not just a, I mean, I, I think you have to justify that this area's been impacted by the coronavirus, or it's made worse. And that's why we're seeking to, uh, use these funds to address that opportunity. So that's kinda the genesis of where we, uh, came up with these areas, if you will. We're looking at those, uh, how we can best use those funds to impact, um, uh, recovery, to impact, uh, where we're going. And if you look at the twenty teachers, uh, we know, uh, we have learning loss in, in, in the early grades. We wanna be able to, where we know by data that we have needs to lower the class size uh, so that we can continue to, uh, address those learning loss area, uh, address those areas. Uh, we know in high school where we have, uh, failures, that we would be able maybe to add some other teachers to be able to help address, uh, that also to, again, to, uh, be able to lower that class size. Uh, and, and we're at any rate, if you look at those priorities, we said first in early grades, that was our first priority. The second area is, of course, you know, as we know, we have ATS high schools, who, schools who, uh, have low achievement, and those are our middle schools. So we wanna be able to, you know, add personnel, especially to the teaching staff is where we wanna add it, to be able to address, um, um, helping with learning loss to, to address those areas. And then finally, uh, the third priority would be the high schools. Um, the, we're, you know, we're proposing this because it is a proposal. We'll have to look at that and see where it goes. And, you know, it may be that, you know, we're able to, that we made some gains in one area and we may be able to use this money and, and address another area. Or we may have to come back and propose more actions. But, uh, I think, you know, our effort is to get started, uh, trying to address some of these areas.
I mean, if I could just kinda go with that, and I'll just, it's a work session, I guess I can share what I think about these things. Um, I am fundamentally against spending seven million dollars on HVAC. I know it fits into the criteria, but I don't, I don't, just don't, it's not a priority for me based on what I think we can do and, and the deficiencies we have as a district. I also, while I understand that adding people looks like a way to do that, to me, it doesn't seem like a solid plan, a plan on actually improving outcomes. Just putting more teachers in the classrooms is not gonna make us better. It's just not. Um, we could get these class sizes down to maybe one or two students per teacher if you really wanna get there. But it's been shown time to time, it just doesn't really show or speak to a solid plan for improve, improving academics. And in my opinion, we've got an, an opportunity here with a large sum of money to absolutely look at things differently. But I see more of the same kind of things we've done in the past that I just don't think are gonna work again. Because I don't see a solid plan to actually improve academics. I mean, I hear what you're saying on that. And, and what you say is we'll kinda see, we're gonna add people and see. And I, and in my opinion, that's what we've done for a lot of years here in this district, is just add people and see if it gets better. I just don't see a, I don't see a plan that is academic-based. Maybe I'm missing it, maybe you explained it and I completely missed it, but I don't see it here.
I can address that real quickly. You know, this is, part of the S R is, um, it is focused on reducing the learning loss. And I agree, that's what we need to do. And the part of the plan is, what the S R application is, is we're gonna have to spell out the plan, uh, why we're doing it, the whys and the hows. I agree with you. We just can't just throw money at it and just hope it fixes itself. We set up a lot of structures this year, a lot of structures that I've bring, brought in as part of my vision. Part of my vision this year for us is we need to know where every one of our kids are at. We've gotta know. And that's part of that KTE twenty-one that I told you guys we need to purchase because we need to know where they're at. Alongside with, uh, when the state finally gives us the final recommendation for our progress monitoring tool, we'll be able to use that to see where they're at at skills and standards. Once we have those, those assessments in and we know where these kids are at, we are attacking through, when you look at the high-quality materials. We've gotta pick, pick the adopted curriculum that's part of the new law, what we're gonna do. We're also having our, our instruction department specifically looking at our coordinators. We're, we're drawing up our plans on what are these interventions gonna look like. We, Scott and I have been talking pretty in-depth the last couple of days. How are we gonna identify kids that need the interventions after school, the additional interventions? And those are gonna be some of the money spent there for what are we gonna do after school, how are we gonna identify them, and what, what are we gonna use as content? I agree, you can have two kids in a classroom with an adult, and if the adult's just sitting there twiddling with their thumbs, they're never gonna get anything from it. We're more, we're being more directive in how we're gonna be using curriculum, how we're gonna be using the, the intervention time. It's gonna be part of the training that we're gonna be doing with teachers next week on exactly what is it going to look like in your classroom? You know, the reason that we want the, the smaller class sizes is, one, it's be able to identify the, the kids and spend more time with them in those interventions directly in a day. When you have twenty-five kids opposed to twenty, it makes a huge difference on how many of the small groups you can bring back and do the intervention. This is K twelve. We've got to be able to identify, to sum up what I'm saying, we gotta be identify, identify what do they not know? What do we do to make sure they do know it? And then what are we gonna do with the kids also that we don't wanna lose in this, is what do we do with the kids that already know it? We can't just leave them out there and say, "You're fine, just go over there and play with Play-Doh." So part of the plans that principals are gonna be helping to, to define with their school is, these interventions aren't just for the kids that are far behind. What are the interventions you're gonna be doing for the kids that are, are there and above? So we're gonna be very prescriptive in what they, each kid needs. It's almost like every kid will be on their own plan for where that teacher needs to attack. When any of the principals walk through their school, or myself, we should be able to go to that teacher and they can tell us right away where Johnny's at and what they're doing for Johnny. Now, when we start talking about interventions, you have two types, skills and standards. The skills have to be research-based, they have to be approved by the federal government. And we have adopted for the elementary, the, uh, the, I, any, we've adopted the program. And we're going to be doing a training with those in EAs next week on how to successfully implement that program. And we, we, we're just gonna be really focused, we're going to be really specific on what we're doing, how we're doing. And we are starting that training next week with teachers in EAs to make sure that we're just not leaving, leaving it up to chance that something happens.
Can you tell us which program you're talking about? Is that the ninety-five percent materials that we bought the last time around with S R money?
No, that's not for this. We bought ninety-five percent of the S R two. Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, yeah. We've got, we've got the materials now, and now we're implementing the additional training. And not only with, uh, you know, I think in the past, we bought some materials. Uh, we did not get to, uh, really train, especially in middle schools, those folks with that equipment, so, with that materials. So we're trying to address that, uh, not only with, uh, uh, we're trying to address that first with the educational assistants who oftentimes are using those smaller packets of materials. So, uh, that's, that's one area we're doing. And we have training laid on for other groups as we, as we move forward. Uh, with the, we've got enough material now where everybody has the materials that they need to be able to address intervention. And now we're continuing to train the people to be able to, to use those materials effectively.
And if I can add, Ms. Parker, it sounds like one of the things where it's, it's been successful and failed in different schools in Murray County, the piece that we've seen is that fidelity monitoring. The piece that we've seen is that fidelity monitoring, that we're, it, it's not going to be, if you want to, they're going to have, principals and assistant principals and their, uh, coaches are going to have to do the fidelity monitoring to make sure that they're being, that these interventions are being implemented properly, correctly, and in a timely manner.
So in addition to what David said about the HVAC, I, I feel that, but also I want to go back to the educator recruitment. And in hearing this, um, my thoughts are, um, this sounds really great for 20 people. But I just think there's so many holes in it and maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way. But, I mean, is there anything like as far as equal opportunity employment? Because if we're just picking 20 people to give this to, I mean, if I was the 21st person wanting it and it's not there, I mean, I mean, maybe I'd just be upset and have to go on with it. But I could see that also creating negative feelings amongst those that don't get it, that's one thing. But then two, I, I just feel like there's no guarantee with it. I mean, maybe unless it's just to attract the, the support staff that we need now and maybe that's the angle you're coming at it. But here's my thing, I mean, things happen. What if on year five, when they're ready to start teaching, they get hit by a bus? You see what I'm saying? We haven't gained a, a new employee. We've, yeah, those things, I know that's terrible, but things like that do happen. I'd rather see this in some creative way either go to personnel or directly to something that would, and I know that this is, when I say personnel, but, I mean, I just look at this as someone getting the golden ticket to, for a free college and to get paid for their student teaching. I mean, that's unheard of. I mean, that's great. But I just think it's really 20 lucky people that I don't, I, I don't see that it really directly impacts our kids.
I for one am very excited about this and the reason being is, um, I actually attended a thing at the school board conference in 2019, where, um, there was a program put on by Clarksville Montgomery School Systems that had been doing this with an, a extremely high success rate. Um, at a time when people aren't going to school to be teachers. We need to be doing everything we can possibly be doing to recruit new edu, educators. Now, I don't look at this as a one and done kind of situation. I expect that we will, this will be kind of a fund that we will have to annually contribute money to. Because I don't think this is just 20 teachers. Uh, I would anticipate that this is just to start with 20 teachers. Um, and next year I would like to see us put, I'm making up a number, $200,000 or $100,000 into this, out of our budget every year so that we're continually adding candidates to this. Um, I, I think it's, I mean, you got to look at, we're paying educational assistants like $14,000 a year. This would be a great bonus to give them something to work towards, doing something more than $14,000 a year. Um, and they are already current employees, so they're already here. Um, the data will show, has shown, uh, at least in Montgomery, Clarksville, that those teachers stay for a very long time. Um, obviously there's extenuating circumstances. I, I could walk out of here and get hit by a bus tomorrow. Um, I could just graduate college paying for it myself and the same thing happened. But, uh, you know, we can play what if, all not, I'm really good at that. But as far as this program, I, I think this is something, I actually talked, when we forgot back from that conference, I talked to Dr. Marzak directly and we were working towards that, uh, before we changed our mind about him and went a different direction. Uh, I'm excited to see something back. I would really like to see more on the program specifically. This is a very vague overview. I'd like to see more details about it. I would like, I'd love to see what the sustainability of it. And I also hope you collect lots of data on it as well. Thank you.
Um, I will echo what was said about the HVAC. Um, one of the things I saw in there was it said it supported social distancing. I was not aware that we were going to be socially distancing when we go back to school. Is that going to be the case?
No, we're, we're operating as normal. Uh, we're letting, telling principals that they're just going to use their, for visitor policy, whatever they've been using for their visitor policy. Uh, just a reminder on the HVAC, that was one of the things that was asked from the board. So that's why it's on there. I mean, that's something if we, when we.
Those were listed individually on the first capital report that came to you guys. And as we talked about paring it down, one of the things was we could move those to ESR and that was the agreement at that time to take that money off of the capital request.
I would just ask how much money have we spent with train in the last eight years, uh, last seven years?
On those four buildings, on those projects?
No, 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 not those four, across the county.
I can get you that information.
I'd be curious.
Yeah.
Again, I think this money is supposed to go to help our kids. And if you told me that you had better filtration, I doubt anybody else would have sent their kids with cor, during the Corona pandemic in March of 2020.
And again, the only reason we put it in there is it was on the original capital and was asked to be moved.
I understand. I would just say that I personally am not supportive of that. So I don't know how, we need to take a straw poll for everybody else, but, um, I just think we could do better with that. The other thing is, um, the idea of having more teachers, I, I get that. My question is, how many vacancies do we have right now for teachers? How are we going to get those filled in the next two weeks? And then potentially add more people? And then how are we going to pay for subs for all these people when they are out? Do we have any way to pay for subs?
We just have the, um, the what's budgeted for the subs at this point, um, that, so yes, you would be correct.
I, I will just say, I think you mentioned something though about, I, I guess you can see where I'm going with the adding people. I, I don't think that part of this has been very well thought out. I think because the idea of reducing class sizes, and I should be honest with you, my kindergartner was not affected by coronavirus. And it says K through three, so we're not even necessarily addressing it for the kids that were in our classes. You know, in March of 2019 or whatever, you know, whenever that was, um, 2020, sorry. Um, also you mentioned after school stip, or you mentioned after school work. I didn't see stipends in there for that. I saw summer. Did I miss that?
We currently still have funding in ESR two for stipends for after school. And we also still have funding in ESR one, uh, that's addressing after school. So as you know, federal budgets have a big, uh, they close, we can't expend any more money, we have to recycle. So we are looking at that now as to reallocate those funds, what we didn't expend. And we'll continue those past, uh, with a priority, as you know, we have spent ESR one first. So we are proud to, I'm sorry, prioritize those funds toward, uh, after school. Or what we know we need to expend quickly, uh, not saying we're just going to spend money, but we know we, we will prioritize, prioritize those funds toward, uh, after school and then continue to add ESR two as we need to.
Well, I'll just reiterate what Mr. Moore said in that we, we have a communication problem sometimes. If, if that's going to be something that we're going to be offering, I don't think we need to drop that on parents like two weeks into the school year. Because guess what? People have already made their arrangements for after school. They'll already have signed their kids up for dance or football or cheer or whatever they're going to do. And if they don't know that that's something that they need to be, have, you know, prioritize for their kids, I think that we're going to have lackluster participation. Um, and those funds won't go, um, won't go as far as we want them to. The last thing I'll say is the, the bonuses, I would be more interested in bonuses that are very targeted. Making sure that all 89 vacancies are filled and filled for the year. Um, to me, if we're paying a bonus and we have vacancies, we are, I, I don't get it. If we need to pay signing bonuses, if we need to, if we need to pay $10,000 to get a certified science teacher, I feel like that's something we need to look at to make sure that these kids have what they need. Um, it just, I, I don't get just paying a bonus just because we all experienced 2020. We all experienced the pandemic. It was disruptive for all of us and I just don't know that we should all get a bonus just because. Um, now, I, I think also it says, it's a $1,500 bonus to all existing employees. So I assume that there will be employees that were not employed with Murray County. When we went through Corona in 2020 or last year, they would also be getting bonuses. So I don't know what's the purpose of this. So I'd really like some information on the bonus part and, and why we came up with just a blanket $1,500.
If, if you're alluding to the blank, that was when we were talking about the teacher pay raises is we brought in that we could pay them with the ESR money bonuses for this year.
Again, I'm fine to pay people more, but I want students to be, to be the beneficiary of this. And if you just pay somebody $1,500 and that doesn't mean that my kid's going to have a, a, a teacher for the entire year. As a parent, that's what I'm concerned about. That's, that's all I'm saying. I think we made a lot of promises with ESR money throughout the last several months.
So am I hearing that the board doesn't want to do that now?
I'm not saying I don't want to do a bonus. I'm saying I want it to be more targeted than just in across, for me personally, I would just like for it to be more targeted to make sure that we have hard to reach, hard to fill positions first and foremost. I think that there should be bonuses for that.
Um, I was, I was just going to speak in support of, uh, grow your own program. I think that's a great idea. Uh, I don't know about annually. I think maybe every four years. Abs, as one class leaves, another class would enter. I, I do see a lot of benefit in that because you do get to basically pick your own teacher and then grow them into your own program. Uh, I think that's all around a good idea. I do worry about, and I don't mind the fact that the 20 positions, I think it was 20, uh, funded for the, through ESR. I don't really have a problem with that, but I do have concerns with actually filling them, uh, when we haven't filled what's before that. Uh, so I do, I do worry about that because right now it is, uh, it's kind of like a what if in my mind. Uh, and that's a lot of money to what if about. Other than that, uh, I think that's, that's pretty much good for me.
Oh, I've got a lot more to go. I, well, I'll cover a few things and then we can move on. Um, so to go with that, I, a couple of things, actually, and Mr. Hickman, I know you had asked, is that what the board thinks? I don't know if the board thinks that. I know Ms. Parker stated that, um, and I would actually agree with that. I'm just not in favor of, of sending out bonuses just because you were here or just because you're employed. I'm just not a fan of it. Um, and I say that not because that's not, has nothing to do with the teachers. I'm going with the same goal of what I've said on this is I want us to be targeting areas that we know we are already deficient in, that we have problems in. And I'm not talking about just COVID losses. We already were deficient before COVID got here. And this is an opportunity for us to address that. And again, part of my issue here is we're doing the same old things again, just adding 20 employees. I'm not in favor of that either. Number one, um, it's not a, that's not really a plan to do better. I know, I know, Mr. Hickman, you explained some things that we could do with that. But it's, it's really just adding warm bodies at the end of the day that we already have trouble filling. We, we talked about that. Um, I am very, very concerned that we had 20 employees and at the end of 2023, when that money runs out, they're not going away. So now we're going to have a 2.6 million dollar, actually, let's increase it because it's going to go up by then. More, more like 2.8 million dollars cost that we're, I can guarantee you all are going to come back to us and say, okay, we've got these employees. We've got to keep them. Where do we find 2.8 million dollars? And that's what we're going to run into. And that concerns me because it's, that's not planning ahead for this. I mean, it, it's a very dangerous game to play because again, once they're here, we've seen this in the past, they're here. Um, I'll go back to, I think Ms. Parker brought up an excellent point. I would love to see more money go to the sub line. To me, the fact that we need subs right now and a lot of subs are going to need them is absolutely fallout from COVID. And I don't know how you cannot acknowledge that that's a big issue that we definitely need to address. Again, just one board member's opinion on that. Um, something I didn't see in there that I really thought about, instead of just a blanket, uh, bonus to employees, I would love to see targeted professional development that not ju, that really, and I mean, not garbage stuff. Because I've heard teachers say for years, they come to me and say, oh man, this PD was horrible, I wasted my day on it. And that, that hurts me because I think we, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out how to spend money on something. And when a teacher comes to me and says, I got nothing out of this, what I would love to do is offer teachers, and I, again, this is outside of my scope of expertise, but there's got to be a way to offer teachers something that lets them walk away saying, wow, I got something, I'm a better teacher because of that. And at the end of the day, what I hear from that is as a parent, that that's something that teacher's, that's now a better teacher because of that professional development, is a better teacher for my kid. So I would love to, to spend some time and effort to really get some, I'm talking top notch. Again, we've got a lot of money here, top notch professional development where these teachers can walk away feeling like they're a better professional in their craft because of what they did on those professional development days. And that just is, that's absolutely going to, they're going to feel better about it because we're giving them something that is making them better at what they do already. And at the end of the day, we've got better teachers and, come on, I mean, I don't know how that's not a good thing for us. So I would love to see some money that's targeted towards that and finding ways to make that work. I know some of the struggles we had with the, the, um, MOU we have with, is, is getting teachers in here before school starts. I don't know if there's, could be some funding to maybe, to fund part of that to get them in here so that we can have some devoted time that, where we're not taking them out of the classroom throughout the year. Maybe we can look at that. Again, I'm, I'm suggesting maybe look at some things a little differently than we have in the past. And maybe that's a way where, uh, we pay some teachers to get here on some specific days where they can spend those days where their only focus is being a better teacher and they don't have distractions and they're not trying to piece it in between their, their lesson plans for the next quarter. So I'm, just some things I'm throwing out there. I know that's where I'm at on it.
Mine's kind of a question and a statement, all in one. Um, in regards to the employee bonuses, I do remember us discussing that. However, uh, my memory, which is probably scary to reflect on that, but my memory was that we were going to look at a thousand dollar bonus per teacher is what I had in my mind. Maybe I was wrong because I, am I wrong? Okay. Was it a thousand or 1,500? Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking. It was a thousand dollars. So I say that to say this, I think the teachers need a morale boost. And I personally would like to do something for the teachers. I, I would be very comfortable with a thousand, me personally, others may not. But if we did a thousand and knocked off that 500, I'm wondering if kind of in line with what Kristen was saying, if possibly we could do things to maybe attract new, um, new faculty by maybe, um, promising them a bonus after they've completed their first year of employment. Um, I wouldn't give it to them upfront, but maybe like after the end of the year. That's just a thought, so.
Well, I'm, I am reminding this board that one of the reasons when we had the budget process and we were not willing to even give them, uh, seek the way to give them even a cost of living raise and actually gave them less than any of the surrounding counties, that one of the reasons was we can use ESR funds and give them a bonus. Okay, I looked at surrounding counties, they're using ESR funds up to $2,000 for bonuses. And you're alluding to the fact that there are a lot of openings in this county? One of the reasons is our salaries are not competitive. We've had a loss of people, probably a lot because of ESR, because they're burned out. Okay? Uh, I very much favor giving these, uh, I, I don't mind if you don't give a first year, I, I understand that. But I, I think we're being negative if we assume they're not worthy of getting this. I think that they have put in the time, they've done double time teaching, remote, in person. And yes, everybody's not perfect, but I cannot imagine the year that they've gone through. And we didn't give them a substantial raise, we didn't give them one, last year or the year before that, only 1%. And, and that's okay? No, it's not okay. And so this is a way in which we can say, we do appreciate you. We, the county commission didn't give us funds to give you the raise, they're getting 5%. But we can, we want to show you we can appreciate and here's this opportunity to do that. So I don't care if it's a thousand, 1,500, 2,000 or whatever, they deserve it and I would not be for taking it out.
I'm in agreement with that. I, I don't mind a hiring bonus. However, I want to caution you that if, if I've been teaching math here for five years and all of a sudden my employer is offering math teachers a $4,000 bonus, what's mine saying to stay? I mean, honestly, there, there are other counties that can offer that same bonus and I've decided to stay here. Well, why should I not go to that other county and leave this county and get that $4,000 bonus from that other county? Uh, you have to be careful. I don't mind being targeted. I understand that there are certain positions we do need. But I think we need to take care of our people that are here, that have stayed here. but I think we need to take care of our people that are here, that have stayed here. I would, I would really like to see this maybe rewritten a little bit to teachers that were here and stayed with us for the twenty twenty-one year are eligible for the bonus. Again, I'm not saying we shouldn't do a targeted bonus or whatever, but they would not get it upfront. They would definitely get it after they've been with us for a year or, or whatever the, but I, I just, I don't understand not giving them, teachers that were with us a bonus. Uh, they stayed here through a very tumultuous year. Um, we gave them a raise, a two point one, two percent raise, which was, I mean, what we could afford to give. Um, so this would be a nice, I mean, I don't know if y'all are realizing that our teacher morale is not the best. And that's not just ours. I mean, that's across the state and the nation. But anything I can do to make it a little bit better, I, I'm all for. Um, and we did discuss a thousand, but it was also thrown out there that it could be as much as fifteen hundred. So this is not out of the realm of what we discussed. Um, so I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with this at all. Um, I just don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Lindsey, we're back to you.
Uh, I agree with, uh, Mr. Hal on some of that. Um, I think we've got to have to be careful about picking out certain groups. Um, you know, I, I've been on Direct TV for twenty years and it kind of aggravates me when they offer an, um, a new customer a better rate than I have. So, uh, so I, I get that. But, um, as far as the HVAC system go, the systems go, um, as, within the last week, we've been, we've, we've saw how difficult capital money is to come by. So I think we, we have to take advantage of every opportunity we have when it comes to, to capital needs. And, uh, so I'm, uh, definitely in favor of that. But, uh, the, the last item you guys have on there, Esser coordinator, secretary bookkeeper, clerk, um, I'm assuming those are three different positions and then, uh, kind of have questions about how they intermingle with Doug's office. Are they gonna be an employee of Doug's? How, it, it just seems like if they're, you should, you sugarhead knows, I'm assuming they're not gonna be employee of Doug. So it, it, gonna have to educate me on how that's gonna work if they're not, I'm just not following that.
We were, the wording was there, the state has told us everything, but rec, they can't make us do it, but they're strongly recommending to, they wrote letters. We've got a letter from the commissioner of education saying that with this money, it's so much with these last three, that they are strongly recommending, and I can't remember her exact words, to make sure we have people that are over these grants because of all of the federal guidelines and all the federal audits we're gonna be going through in the next couple of years over this money. So they told us to peel off, they told us to peel off, it was like ten percent and we figured we could do it with this. This would be sort of how our title works because they work with the federal dollars. Um, but this is too much for the title to do on their own and their title positions as well. So this person will be basically the auditor looking over all of this. We'll have the other, also in the office making sure we have to keep inventory. It has to be special, any product we buy has to be specially earmarked. Just kind of put it in the scope of this is just like our title people. Because they're looking over a, the grant money itself, making sure that we are checking the boxes. We're doing everything the federal government does and they will audit us on all of this funds and they're gonna, um, kind of in that role.
But, but there, but it's three positions. Is that correct? Or, or is it, or is it, you're just describing that?
We're just describing it because we, we know that, uh, we've, they've said there will be significant auditing and monitoring requirements, but they haven't translated to whether that's gonna be data analysis. Uh, we know when they say monitoring audits and we know inventory, we know how'd you spend your funds, how are they accounted for? So we, you know, thought that we definitely need a bookkeeper accountant type, similar to what we have in federal programs, what we use to, to monitor those funds and help assist in the administration of those funds. So we know, we, we knew we need that type person. But the other type, you know, it may be somebody that's a, a, a good inventory clerk to be able to, because, you know, definitely we're already identifying all the things that we have purchased with Esser funds. So, because we know that, you know, somebody's gonna come, the federal government's gonna, any funds that they've ever given us over the history of time, they've always come back and ask us, you know, what are you doing with these funds? What have you bought with them? Can you show us the inventory of what you purchased and where they are? So definitely, uh, having people just specifically address those areas will be, uh, significantly helpful to us in terms of, of being able to, and, and like you said, those, we, you know, we intend to have those people through the life of the grant and hopefully they will be able to address that, uh, address those needs so that, uh, we won't have to, you know, that'll make the grant funds be spent efficiently and we won't have to, you know, dedicate a additional time to trying to, uh, do those things like Mr. Hickman said, uh, tasking and putting another task on someone else to do that.
If I remember correctly, I think in, in one of the budget proposals, there was, um, some talk about creating a supervisor of bookkeepers position. Is that included in these duties or?
There were, I mean, there's specifically, if you spend federal funds, they have to be for federal activities. Uh, you know, there's some thought that there's a person that is good with accounting that, you know, maybe over time we could translate, but we, we could not say we're gonna, this person's gonna be a supervisor over general purpose activities because it's being paid with federal funds.
I'm glad to hear you say that because I, I'm, I'm not convinced that a supervisor of bookkeeping is a, I, I realize we've had some deficiencies within our district, uh, in the recent future. And I, I just don't want to be reactive to that and overreactive to that, um, when it's principals and bookkeepers that, that it's their responsibility to take care of those monies. And I just don't want us to be reactive that we go and hire somebody once we, we have a little glitch in the system when, uh, so I, I was glad to hear you say that that's not included in that. So, um, last thing I'll say and I'll shut up. Have we thought about rather than hiring a person, contracting with some accounting firm or something like that? Because we know this money's temporary. We know that, that, uh, this, these positions would be temporary. Rather than bringing another employee in and which, which is gonna, gotta be difficult to, employees are difficult to come by and, and the world as a whole today. Uh, but rather than, than trying to get someone in, knowing they're just temporary, knowing that this is a two-year stint, they're out, have we thought about contracting with an accounting firm to handle this business? That way we, we don't have to deal with, uh, releasing them as an employee after, when the money runs out.
There are, uh, companies out there that, uh, you know, have been emailing us saying we can do that. So, I mean, we'll look at all those options as we do that. We just wanted to put out there that we needed those personnel and, and wanted to try to fund them. And as we move forward and kind of say, we know we can move forward, we'll start to look at, you know, what's the best option for us, whether it's a hiring, hiring personnel or, uh, looking at if, you know, if there is a firm. Um, I know typically sometimes, I mean, you gotta find the right firm. I know we've had a, an auditant firm before and it, you know, it didn't turn out so well because they couldn't translate their, uh, ideas into education. So we have to look at somebody that's, uh, had experience with doing that. So that will be one factor that we would think about in terms of if we were gonna hire an outside firm to help us do that work.
Mr. Hal.
Yeah, I was, I, I do have a little qualms about an outside firm. We, we have hired outside firms to do our accounting and payroll before and that not always spectacular results. Uh, but what I wanted to talk about was the mental and social emotional needs. Um, as I said before, this is something that is very important to me as I, I personally see on the streets, um, a great need for this. I, I, I don't think this is enough personally. Um, I will probably never think it's enough. But, um, you know, suicide, especially for teens and juveniles, it, it's, it's not maintaining. It's not just going up a little bit. It is absolutely skyrocketing. And it's a genera, it's just this generation. There's, there's something about it. Um, I don't know what it is. Um, but I actually was just in a class, or a week long class this, this past week where it was talking about, uh, mental issues and suicide. And the, the, the number, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not Murray County, it's not Tennessee, it's across the nation. The number, it's staggering, the amount of suicides that are going on, uh, in the, in the young children today. And it's not just, it's not just teenagers. That's the thing. Like it's younger kids. So we're seeing younger, we're seeing ten-year-olds wanting to end their life. And so I, I, when I say two hundred and twenty thousand, thousands, not enough, I mean, it's nowhere near enough in my mind. Uh, if we can prevent things from happening and target things and train people to, to know what they're looking at. And, and, you know, why is little Johnny not turning in homework? Is there, is he just lazy? Or is there more to it than that? You know, is there something else? What can we do to provide to make sure that we're targeting those true children in need?
Ms. Parker.
Um, I want to push back on, um, Mr. Lindsey just a little bit about the HVAC. Um, I agree that capital money is, can be scarce sometimes. That's obvious. But, um, I do recall this year that when we needed to overhaul an HVAC system at Santa Fe, we got the money for it. So, I mean, I feel like, and, and historically, I feel like the commission has always stepped up when it comes to HVAC. We do what we can and I feel like we've been very on top of trying to, to keep our HVAC sys, systems working efficiently. But to me, seven million dollars, um, is just a big ask for, um, this money. Because to me, and, and I'll go back to the bonuses just a little bit, but I have heard it stated before that our system can be very employee-centered, not student-centered. And this right here is not student-centered to me. That's just my opinion. Um, seven million dollars on HVAC, that's not gonna make them go to school. That's not student-centered. That's just, that's just us trying to fill a bucket that we need filled because we don't think we're gonna get the money from the commission and I don't think we should give them a pass on that. I'll just be honest about that. Um, but the last thing I would say is I think we got, or we did surveys for this. So I would like to see that information as far as what others said about what they needed. Um, I'm not opposed to using capital money, but I just really don't think that, uh, overhauling, you know, for HVAC systems is where I would like to see the capital money spent. Um, because I don't think it really, at the end of the day, is going to make students come to school.
All right. I don't see any more lights. Uh, I think we've given several suggestions and a little bit more direction.
Uh, I'm assuming this is not going on consent agenda. Mr. Moore.
What's the timeline for when you guys need to have this back and submitted?
The Esser application is due August thirty-first. So, uh, as we move forward, if, our intent, we still, we still will, we did surveys. Uh, we, uh, translate those surveys into, um, output that we would now use to do public forums and say, here's what you said back to us. And we would try to do those at, at each, you know, Spring Hill, Mount Pleasant, uh, Columbia and try to listen again. And we have to do a part of that. And then we would continue to, you know, make adjustments to the budget or move forward in terms of, uh, with, with your approval. Because, I mean, certainly as we, uh, put this budget in E-Plan, I mean, you will actually approve that budget once it, you know, once it comes for approval.
Two, two questions on that. So, um, I mean, that said, I mean, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm not ready for this to go to the next board meeting at all. I mean, to me, this is something that still needs further refinement and discussion as, as a board. Um, so I would hope this isn't just gonna show up on the, the first of August, uh, board meeting. It, was that the intention of other members? Because that's not where I'm at. Secondly, you said the, the public input, is that requirement of the Esser funds? Well, I find that frustrating because in my opinion, uh, this is something, when we're talking about addressing learning loss, the average, and I'll say this as a parent too, I don't have a clue as a parent how to address learning loss. And my opinions on what we need to do with that money are frankly irrelevant. Um, what I would hope is that the educators that are experienced and know how to actually fix some of the problems we have would be putting their heads together and we would wait, uh, very heavily towards that aspect of what opinions matter, much more than just what the average parent thinks we need to do with the money. Even though maybe we've got to check that box federally, I just, this is kind of a, a big deal. And, and again, as a parent, I don't have a clue what to do to have, help you educate my middle schooler better. Um, I, you know, and I don't think most average parents really have much really good targeted info on that. So I would hope again that we're, we're weighing it very heavily towards what you guys can, as professionals, can put together on, on those regards.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Servant. Turn your mic on, please.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was, um, my bad. Um, I do agree with what he said, but I will say I, I have also heard a lot of parent input because the surveys did go out and just wanna see whatever one else thinks or what you guys think. But, um, and it may correlate with what Chad said about, um, the emotional and mental, um, stability. It's about looking into expanding our playground systems, even if there's a way to do something that might, um, like get spanned even into like the high, not that high schoolers want a playground system, but some kind of just social, because I think our kids are missing social now, especially in a technological world. And I think that weighs heavily and crosses into, um, a lot of the depression. That's just my input personally. But just wanted to add that too for whatever food for thought as we're developing this.
Thank you. As far as the timeline goes, we could do a couple of different things. I'll throw this out there and you can shoot it down or, or refine it. We, you guys have heard the input. You guys have heard the concerns and the things that look good. Would it be possible for that to be brought back to us at the August meeting? And at that point, if we don't like it, kick it to the work session in August? It's a suggestion just to get us moving because then we would have, if it, if it were refined and we went through the August meeting, we would need a special call to pass it before the deadline then. I thought you said August thirty-first. Yeah. Board?
Moore?
I would prefer that it isn't on the full board voting meeting. I just would. I think we've still got more to do. And to assume it's gonna be ready by then, I just, I don't, I don't think, I just don't think it is.
Mr. Hickman.
You know, and I'm just gonna be frank, you know, it, it's gonna be hard right now because I've, we're gonna need better input because you guys are divided on some of this stuff right down the middle. When we start talking about the HVAC systems, when we start talking about a couple of these things that I, I had notes on. So, um, you know, there are some good solid suggestions. But the other one was the, um, bonus money, you know. So we, we're gonna have to have the will of the board on that one because it sounds like those two specifically are gonna be a contention point. And I want to make sure, you know, I'm, I'm tracking where the will of the board is on those two things. The other things are things, it sounds like we need to be, have a better specific plan, which we do. The intent was this, to show you just a spending plan. And we'll, we'll be able to provide that. I think if we don't bring it back, we may have to do a, a couple more special calls to get it there. And I do want to say, we weren't dragging our feet on this. They changed the ballgame into May when they added all these stakeholder surveys and we had to let them run for a couple of weeks. And so we, soon as they, soon as that day came, we shut them off. And that's when we got, we were late getting this on there because we couldn't put it on there till we shut it off.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Parker.
I personally don't want to piecemeal it. I mean, you know, this is a lot of money. And, you know, if we're talking about the difference between a thousand dollar bonus or a fifteen hundred dollar bonus, you know, or maybe if we take money out of HVAC, maybe we can do two thousand. I don't know. Maybe we have money for hiring bonuses. Maybe we don't have money. Maybe we have, you know, I just think there's a lot of variables to this. And I personally wouldn't want to commit to just a couple of things or a few things, um, at the August meeting and leave all that money on the table. I think, Mr. Hickman, you can certainly call all the board members and find where we are, um, and, and help move this process along. I mean, I think that, that, that probably would have been beneficial before you put together the, the document.
I, I think to keep from
But, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back and say, you know, we put those, the two specific contention points are the two are the two things that the board asked us to put on there, which was the bonus and the HVAC. So, you know, that's...
Uh, Mr. Lindsay, your light was on.
I get it, it does put you guys in a bad spot. So, just, let's just bring it up item by item, we'll vote it up or down. I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll either vote for HVAC or we won't. If it, if it won't, just make sure you guys got something ready to fill in its spot. Uh, you know, and, you know, that, you got Plan A right here. If, if Plan A floats, it floats. If it, if we kick one part of Plan A out, just have something ready to go with it. I mean, uh, uh, because it, I'm, I don't agree with everything in here, a- and I'm not going to. Um, but if I got to vote for it as a whole, then I'll, you know, I probably would. But, but I don't like everything, and, and, and I'm never going to like everything. And, um, and, and I get what you're saying, you're, you're trying to guess, because some of us talk and some don't, and, and you're guessing who's not talking, where they are, so it, it puts you in a bad spot. So, I say just bring them up, uh, line them, item by item. If at the next board meeting, you get six votes on eighteen million dollars' worth of stuff, we're done. If you don't, then you can keep working on it, and then we'll do it at the special call meeting.
Okay, Ms. Kinzer, I cut you off earlier. Did you want to say anything else? Your light's not on, I just was, I felt mad for cutting you off. Okay. Thanks for not holding a grudge. Uh, Mr. Hooper. Thanks for not showing it.
Um, personally, I would, when you bring this back, I would just like a list of things that are specifically instruction-based. I know that was what seemed like a big part of what we were looking for. If you had a list of that things, uh, then we could hash out exactly where we want to, if we want to put this in there, where we would take the money from, and that way, I mean, absent not doing what Wayne said, because I think that's also a good idea. But, uh, I think, I think that would go a long way with helping make the decision easier if there was numbers with other programs, uh, and their benefits, and see if we can weigh those, uh, against the other things on this list.
Thank you. We do, let me, let me throw this out there and then, because I think you could probably help answer this. We do have the suggestion to go through this at the August meeting, item by item, up or down. And then what doesn't go up, comes back at the work session. That's on the floor. I, I don't have an opinion right now, one way or another, on that. But I do think we need to come to some sort of resolution on how we're going to move forward, because we have been on this for an hour now. So, I, I know that this is a very important part of the meeting, so I'm not saying that this wasn't warranted. I think it is warranted. I just want to make sure that we, um, at least have some sort of plan moving forward. Because I think you've heard about five different ideas on every one of these items. So, whether that is to refine it before the board meeting, whether it's to refine it before the next work session, that's what this board needs to figure out tonight, among other things. Mr. Moore.
Um, I, I can actually go along with Wayne's suggestion on that. I mean, I think it's, it's probably the most reasonable thing to do. Uh, along with him though, I, I think, and he's, well, I think we'd all be adamant, uh, have a few things in your back pocket if something doesn't make it through. Because I absolutely want to find a way to spend all of the money. Uh, so, I would have your plans B, C, and D, maybe even E somewhere in there on some of these, uh, just to make sure what, and, and I, I'll be honest, Ms. Parker's suggestion to, uh, be in, in actual touch with each board member between now and then is probably not a bad idea either.
Ms. Parker.
Let me throw something else out. Sorry, on bonuses. I'll give you another thing that I'd like to see, attendance bonuses. I know. I mean, that way we don't have to pay for subs if we have teachers that are teaching our students. I think that's, that's really what my concern is, just knowing how many vacancies we have. I want to be able to provide quality instruction. And we know when we have a sub in there, we know that we don't get the same level of instruction. And we also know that, you know, when we have teachers that, that are out multiple times from, you know, that, that can also impact instruction. So, that's something else that I'll throw out and maybe another way we could use money.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, are you guys okay with that, to bring it back, that we go item by item at the August meeting? Is that, Ms. Irvin?
I mean, I'm okay with that, but I don't want it to be, like, totally final at that time. I mean, I think it's like the things we approve, that there's things we don't approve. Well, that's what I was asking, it would be final, that's what I was wondering.
Well, I, I think if there's things that we...
Like, we're undecided on, like, if there's seven million dollars that we don't know what to do with, then could we not approve?
We always have the option to, if there's one piece that we just feel like you haven't looked at in all the angles, we can kick that item itself to the work session in August.
I'm, I'm, just, we're, I mean, once, you know, we, we do have to translate all this into a budget, into that plan. We have to define why, all those things have to, and that, that does take some time to get done. And, you know, sometimes you send stuff up and you've got to send it back, and the con- and of course, we got to the thirty-first, but, you know, we would, you know, not saying, we want to get started, oh, moving forward, uh, as soon as we can. And they're going to, they're not, they're going to approve the whole thing, or they're not going to approve it.
Well, and I, I think just from this discussion, you, I hope you've heard, you're not going to be rewriting this whole document. There's a lot of things, I think, that will be agreeable. There's a few things, obviously, you know, you're going to have to plan maybe a backup for. Uh, but hopefully, that won't take up as much time as its initial, because obviously, this took a lot of time and you guys put a lot of effort into it. So, I think that's, moving forward, maybe a way to look at it and think of it as well. I know, I know this does seem like we're just kind of dragging this out and putting you guys under the gun quite a bit. But, it's a lot of money, and I do think everybody has valid concerns on, on their input on this. Mr. Hickman?
And I agree, and this is a one-time money, and we need to d- spend it very wisely.
Exactly.
And at the end of the day, I can't be adamant enough. It's got to be for students, it's got to be somehow improving our students of Murray County, which I know the HVAC, and I'm going to bring this up, and you might get mad at me here, but y- you know, tonight, we did go to our, um, operations at the commission. And it, it passed, six oh, for the budget. But I also want to put out there too, even though it seemed like they killed last night with, uh, capital, they did send a olive branch, and I just don't want to, a- a- and I'm not doing HVAC so much for them, but I want to be very careful that we don't take that olive branch and break it in too, and say, "Well, I know we said we're going to do this, but..."
Right. Okay. Uh, seeing no other lights that are on, I think we kind of have a direction going forward on this. Um, I appreciate everybody's input. You know, a lot of times, we talk about things for an hour and it feels like we talked in circles. This was not one of those occasions. I feel like every, uh, conversation item here has been well warranted. All right, let's jump back to the, uh, Carl Perkins Grant.
Ms. Dr. Brown's coming in.
Okay. Thank you much. Any questions, any comments? The... Hit your mic. Consent, okay, consent agenda. Sorry to make you come all the way up here for that. Advanced Placement School System MOU. Anything on this, do we need to hear anything about it? All right, come on up and talk to us. We will make you, uh, make that long walk.
No problem. This is the MOU with, uh, the AP for all, access for all, that the state's put together. It's the Nice Longer Institute. Gist of the program is, it's providing all AP access for all students, um, specifically in digital format. We won't have to contribute anything to it. Um, the only thing that we have to do is we have to assign an AP coordinator per, uh, school so that they can make sure that the students get registered for the AP stuff, make sure that the students have everything that they need. Very good program, the state's funding everything for it. Um, it will give several opportunities specifically to Santa Fe. Uh, when I talked to Mr. Hubble, that's how they plan to offer AP to their students. Um, it also gives our AP, our students AP access if they want to take it outside of the normal school day. So, there's a lot of different pluses to it. I don't see any negatives to it. It doesn't lock us into anything except having that AP coordinator, so, and they actually get a stipend for some of their time, so...
As I paid for it by the state.
That's by board, by the state, not us.
All right, lovely. Ms. Parker.
I do have some questions about it. Um, one, do we ha- i- it sounds like they're going to pay for AP tests for students?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is something that we don't offer, for our students. So, how are we going to address it?
Yeah, but they got the federal government paying for it, not us.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, what is going to be the incentive for our teachers to continue to teach AP classes?
Some of the schedules are already put together.
For this year?
It's just a different opportunity, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I'll just, I'll just say, I can't imagine taking an AP class online, but that's just me. You taught AP art history, I'm sure you couldn't imagine teaching it online.
Well, and it, we've given schools those options. They can place it into the student's schedule, they can put a teacher in there. But they, the Nice Longer is going to give them a teacher that works for it. Um, they've also offered stipends for teachers that may want to come and join. So, Ms. Kinzer, if you want to come teach AP history, they'll pay you two thousand dollars.
Oh, they did try to recruit me, but...
Do you think it's art?
I, I told AP art, that is visual art.
Yeah.
Not art history.
Oh, did I say art history? I'm sorry. I took art history and it was a fabulous class. I bet you would have. Um...
But I see your concern with that. Once again, it's offering it to students that may or may not have this chance, so, and, and it may cause us to see a dip in our AP numbers. Uh, we've...
Which I would love to know, I mean, I would love to know what their pass rates are, um, to have that information, to compare with what ours are. And then also, I mean, I think if we're going to start offering, but we talk a lot about equity across the board, and I, I get offering, you know, ma- making AP available to more schools, and I like that option. But I also don't necessarily like the option that means that students that have a teacher in front of them then have to turn around and pay for a test, and we have no money in here to pay for that. So, that's something I've said all along, is I'd like to see us put money towards AP testing. I think it's money well spent. If we're talking about ESAR funds, I mean, good lord, let's just put ESAR funds towards it, right? Um, that, that is actually student-centered, so, you know, just saying. Um, but, yes, I'm sure they did. So, I, I just, I don't know that this has been completely thought out as to how it impacts all our schools and all our students. I think you're creating disparity that doesn't have to exist. Okay.
Ms. Irvin.
I mean, I kind of agree with you, Nick, because, I mean, the kids, I've, I've had to take classes online, and I've had to take classes in person, and I'm much better of a in-person learner. And I know that that's part of the, um, the uniqueness that we choose when we choose to be at a unit school. We're, we're choosing to not have some of those luxuries, and I, I get that. But, there's still going to be some unbalance naturally, is my opinion on that. But I do have a question for you, like, would that be something that they would then do within the walls of the school? Like, would they have, like, would they have, like, basically, I don't want to call it a study hall, but like, somebody monitoring them while they're sitting in front of a computer doing their AP? Or would it be, like, I know some of our kids are allowed to, like, maybe, um, leave early to go to jobs, and it's something that they could then do, like, at nine o'clock at night or whenever? It would then be that flexibility of such, so...
Yeah, the way the current program is set up, it's set up as an asynchronous learning. So, the schools have the option of doing it either way. Um, I'm, I kind of prefer the method that you said, and I know that Santa Fe used that this year. Um, that was how Mr. Hubble was able to get some kids into AP classes, because they would come and do a modified study hall where they were in the computer lab and had access to a teacher that could look at, eh, look at everything that they were doing. Um, I know that it'll be videos and completely asynchronous, so, if a student did want to do it, um, there's a chance that a student could pick up extra credit. So, I think that's an interesting thing to look at from the high school perspective, so... I just think there's a lot of different avenues with this, that it's not going to cost us anything.
So, it's definitely not like a live stream, it's more like, okay.
No, it's a completely asynchronous. They email the professor, just like you would with any other class?
Okay, sounds like, uh, this obviously won't go on consent agenda, but if you could get us those statistics, that...
They won't have statistics for the pass rate for this year.
No, well, no, just whatever you can get us to address some of these questions that you've heard. I, if you don't have anything, don't bring anything. Okay, all right, well, uh...
For Nice Longer? That, it's a brand-new program. Okay, the, just now got, yeah. Sounds good.
All right, that's, that's what I was referring to.
So, just our, just our AP pass rates?
Whatever you can get us, it'll be helpful.
Okay.
All right, um, zoning and facilities, thank you for coming up. And just to reiterate, that will be at the board meeting, but not on the consent agenda. Um, zoning and facilities, operation information for the board, Mr. Perriman.
Good evening. The first two things for, uh, capital project report is just your monthly statement on where our monies are. If you look at that, um, the item that Mr. Hall is going to speak to you in a minute does come off of that capital list. It does close out one of our, uh, borrowings, that's one-seventy-seven fund. It closes it out completely and does take money from another, so we're pretty low on that. Just to update you really quickly, we are about ninety percent complete on Santa Fe. And we hope to, by the end of the week, be cleaning, uh, so that when everybody gets back next week, they're into a building that is much cooler, much more temperate, and looks a whole lot better actually, because it has a whole new ceiling throughout the hallways. Uh, we may have some work that we finish up at fall break on that project, where we take the, the actual, the old units out of the gym, uh, and out of the theater. Uh, and we would just soon do that when there's no one there, but we'll make sure that gets cleaned up. We have not had to touch much of the contingency money on that project as well. You remember, it was around two-point-seven, two-point-eight million. The commission gave us three hundred, I mean, three million, so we do have some contingency money there that we're probably going to come back, and our first thing is to look at flooring at Santa Fe, uh, and get that taken care of, maybe anything else we need to wrap up specifically in that building. Uh, and then we may come back for, for some additional items at other buildings if, if everything's wrapped up. And the other thing, um, you know, McDowell is on your, on here for us to talk about later. We have it ready, it's emptied, uh, part of what you approved for surplus, uh, was some items that came from there. Uh, and we have, uh, we've spent a great deal of our summer dealing with it. And the last big project we've done is, we did not think we would get Riverside Elementary painted. Uh, I was over there yesterday morning, and they think they're going to be done by Friday. Um, it's been a challenge, and, uh, we've pulled lots of maintenance men on rainy days and, and given them paint, uh, rollers and brushes. But those two schools, Santa Fe and Riverside, if you go in them at the start of school, are going to look tremendously different than they did, uh, on the last day of school. So, just a shout-out to everyone and their hard work on that. The, the only bid item we have for you tonight is the boiler pump replacement at Mount Pleasant High School. And Mr. Hall's going to answer any questions you have on that project.
Are there any questions on that? Consent? It is.
Good deal. Uh, the next item on there i- and then actually, the attachments on here are, again, are for your eyes only, they're not public. You guys are the only ones that saw these two attachments. The first one is the attachment we gave you earlier, which is just the appraisal on the McDowell property. Uh, we are nearing the time with the, the two government entities not really moving forward and having much interest in this.
I could, I could go ahead and tell you officially, both of them have decided not to make any action on it.
So, so, you have the appraisal, the other is a memo from me that outlines a timeline that we are proposing to you for us to, uh, uh, facilitate the, 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 uh, purchasing, I mean, the, uh, sale of, of that property. Uh, it gives you the timeline. It also sets the bid recommendation at what we feel like your minimum bid should be. The only thing we would need approval from you on at the board meeting is, one, the timeline to give us permission to do it, and two, for you to verify whether you think that bid is the appropriate low bid for that or not. Uh, and we are open to suggestion, that's just the timeline and the bid we brought to you.
Yeah, I think we're having some, what's going on? I didn't see any attachments under that section.
There are two attached, because I'm in, uh, there are two attachments at the bottom of that.
Oh.
You got one? I- it's one attachment, but it is two.
Well, I mean, is it there at that item number? Maybe it's because I'm on my phone, but...
That's it, and that is the memo, and then the, the appraisal was the... That's it, and that is the memo, and then the, the appraisal was the long, the long document. I, I'm, I made it for you to see, uh, because I felt like that was your priority first, it's your property. Uh, anything you wanna talk about is in there, and, and we'll talk about, answer, or do as much as you wanna still do.
That's why I'm not able to get it, then I'm on my phone.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Mr. Lindsey?
I guess there's some talk about the minimum, but my question is, if we don't get the minimum, or do we, do we plan on keeping it, or...
It would be your, your discretion.
Well, and, and that's what, that was my, I was kinda...
To them.
Yeah, asking, asking the board, 'cause it is, and, and I'll just give my personal opinion. I, it, it is of no value to me as a board member right now. Um, and I don't, I don't think it'll, that, that, uh, we'll get, yeah, I mean, I think we'll get bids. I think we'll get bids above the minimum, but, um, just part of me, part of, it, it scares me a little placing a minimum on it, uh, 'cause then what do we do? If, if we don't, if we don't receive a bid, uh, then, then where do we go from there? So, I, I mean, I, I just don't want the minimum to scare somebody off, uh, and I, and I, I don't guess we gotta keep the minimum a secret, 'cause it's gonna become public as soon as we vote on anyways, but if, if we set the minimum at, at a million dollars and nobody's willing to bid a million dollars, but somebody's willing to bid five hundred thousand, as far as I'm concerned, it's not, I'd like, rather get five hundred thousand out of it than to get nothing, and that's, um... But I, I just wanted to throw that out there, I, I don't, maybe we're setting a minimum because we don't want to have to go through fourteen hundred bids. I, I, I don't know, but...
Two things, one, and I hate referring back to past conversations, but at some point I was asked, what do you think the minimum should be, put it on a memo? That's how it got there. Uh, but two, maybe exactly what you said, if we don't place a minimum on this, then anybody can bid, and, and it could be subject to, I mean, if you've gone to a bid opening and you sit there and there's, there's fifteen bids and seventeen, you know, fourteen of them didn't even fill the paperwork out right, it's a little frustrating in the end, uh, so, so I'm good with whatever. We, the minimum that I recommended was based off of two things, what the appraisal came back at, and what current markets look like, no, nothing's selling for the appraisal, let's just say that. But it's not, it's very close to the appraisal, and that was just kind of our, our guidance to you. But again, we're good with anything. I think that from a, a staff perspective, we're having a hard time with the building because we're, we're dealing with broken windows, uh, we've had to go in and board up, and, and we're having to, to clean up on the playground where people are messing up things, and, and just some, some issues like that. Uh, so we're trying to, to keep it in, in a good place, so that when it's ready to go, it's ready to go. Uh, our priority would be much the same of yours, we, we, whatever the price, but at the same time, we would like for there to be a benefit to you guys, so that in turn, that turns around to our kids, um, and we could somehow put that money back into them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Laconin, you wanna add something?
Um, we had a property and, and a building on the county side that we were having a real hard time selling. We found that, like, communication, letting the community know that something is happening, and I, I don't think we'll have a problem with that on this particular property. Uh, I think it's, it's been around enough to get enough traction. Uh, but when we set a minimum bid, didn't even get the minimum bid, we just revisited it and, uh, recommunicated it, and we were able to get a much better price than the first bid that we put out for that particular property that was a little over double. So, um, I, we can always, you know, have a provision in which we revisit the offers, and, and if it's something you guys don't wanna move forward with, we can always do it again and, uh, try our best to communicate.
Well, that was kind of in line with what I was gonna ask. What are we going to do, or are we going to do anything to market this? So I know this is a, a heavily sought out after, or sought, um, after property for Murray County, but I can tell you, a lot of your developers are gonna be in Nashville and in Williamson County, and I can tell you that if a lot of them knew about it, our minimum, it's not gonna be an issue. I mean, we're, I mean, Columbia's thriving, I would not personally support going less than our minimum of a million, because we're right up from the square, I see what commercial properties are going for, it's got a lot of opportunity. I know, yes, we're gonna have to demolish the building, but the right person will give us what we want. I, I have full confidence in that, if we market it accordingly. And if we don't, then we, then we go back and we, we reconsider. But the way I look at it, in the best interest of our students, is whatever we get for that, then we can reinvest in our kids. So I don't wanna just be like, let's get it off our hands, but I do wanna make sure we're taking the avenues to get the right interest in it.
So there are, um, guidelines we have to follow, just in general, with putting out bids. Uh, one of those is that we have to put out a solicitation to bid, so it'll be posted in our buildings, along with in the newspaper, on our website, and then, uh, we communicate with developers in the area, uh, that have bid on projects and building projects before as well. So, um, we've used Murray Alliance, a, a lot of it, once it is actually for sale, and, and we go ahead and move forward with putting the bid together based on what you guys vote on in the next meeting, then everyone can start communicating around, uh, and telling everybody that it is available. And, uh, we can share the link for them to go ahead and send in those bids and communicate with purchasing to make sure that everything they submit is within the scope.
And, and they just, the county just recently sold a building in Mount Pleasant with this process. Um, we've discussed how they advertise, we've also looked at if there were forms where we wanted to push out differently than that. There's a minimum cost with that, we have that money in discretionary funds through operations, so it's nothing on the front end that we would have to come to y'all and say, this is gonna cost this much money. We think it would be a low enough cost for advertising today with, with social media and all the platforms, that we could do that minimally, but our goal would be, one, I, I speak to say, we're ready, not ready for it to be gone, but we're, we're ready to not have to manage it. But two, um, the more money we bring in, it's the more money that goes back into our kids. And I know everyone up here has ideas on that, but our, our goal for that would be to make as much as we could, so we come to you and say, many of the kids that were displaced or moved into new zones, there are needs at those schools that, that maybe this follows them. We've talked about following kids, and, and we help to offset the needs that, um, that are maybe not at the top of a priority list. So the more money we make, the better. We have the funds to get, get it out there and, and make sure everyone knows it's for sale.
I mean, I would just, while I want to get as much money as possible, I also don't wanna do a, a drawn-out process where we don't get it and we've gotta come back and just readdress. As far as I'm concerned, I mean, I would think the board could come up with a number. I know I have a, a number in mind, that if, if you guys come back to me and it doesn't pass it the first time, you come back and say, let's lower it the second time, I already know what that number is, I hope you guys do too. And it's not this number, it's actually lower than this. And if everyone's saying it's gonna bring more than that, then making it lower's not gonna be a problem. I just don't wanna drag out the process, because in my opinion, it's a liability for us, and that's my bigger concern, is the liability aspect, that we've got an empty property here that's already starting to be damaged, and I just don't want someone to get hurt or something else like that, that can cost way more than, than us getting an extra hundred thousand dollars for the building. That's my concern. Um, so I, I would rather, I mean, I would, I'd be happy with a number that's honestly half of what's in this memo, uh, if it's up to me, because that's what, if you brought it back to me, I would say, get rid of it, because I just, I'm, I'm very concerned that we've got a, a liability issue the longer it sits there.
And, and again, we can, we've worked with Jake on, on, on this and how we can move forward with this, what needs to go. He may tell you that we don't even have to list a minimum, we can, we can put other provisions in there, I don't know. Um, this again was just, at one point I was asked for a number, this is the number. Whatever you want, we're good with it, so...
If you want my opinion, I think a million dollars is the minimum is appropriate, thank you.
Uh, well, I, I think we all know what vacancy does to buildings. Uh, one, it's, it's very unsafe for the community around it, vacant buildings. Uh, also, the longer it sits there, and the less we get. So the first offer that comes back needs to be talked about regardless, 'cause the longer that building stays vacant, the less you're gonna get for it every single time we try. Uh, so regardless of what that first number is, and whatever minimum we do or don't have, uh, that first number needs to be looked at, 'cause it could quite likely be the best offer we get.
Okay, thank you. All right, well then we'll take this up at our August meeting then. Uh, anything else? Okay, I wanna just touch on a little bit. Uh, we did talk about the capital request, and I think it's no secret by now that the county commission did not approve any funding for the plan that we presented. I would like, and we can decide this at the August meeting, but I would like to see us do a, another planning retreat this fall. I think there were some legitimate things brought up through these com- county commission discussions that maybe we need to reexamine our plan in some areas. Um, I'm not saying that we take our marching orders from any particular group, but I do see that if we go off on our own direction, we're not gonna have anybody following us. I think the, um, we just need to maybe carve out a little bit of time late August, early September. They did ask that we revisit this and maybe come back with something before the end of the year. Uh, and we can do with that what we like. Ms. Irvin?
I was just gonna say, if we wait until fall, I'll just, we'll remind you that we'll have a whole potentially new, um, elected group that time, 'cause that'd be twenty twenty-two.
No, I mean, I mean this fall.
Oh, okay.
No, no.
No, I thought you said about waiting a whole nother year to talk about it.
Nope.
That's why I'm like, well, then that could change everything, so, never mind, then, okay, great.
Uh, Mr. Lindsey?
Um, personally, I think that the sooner we, um, get on this, the better. Um, because, um, I, I'm sure I was like everyone last night, that, that I would, I wasn't very happy when I went to bed, but, um, after I slept on it, the more I think about it, that vote last night doesn't change the needs we have. We, we still need high school seats in the Spring Hill area. And, um, no matter, and, and until we get additional seats, that, that's not gonna change. Um, and I realize what I'm about to say is kinda outside our realm, but, um, if, if, if you've watched those meetings, Doug has, has said numerous times, talked about bond rates and, and the price of borrowing money, and, uh, part of our responsibility is this, with this board, is we have a fiscal responsibility to taxpayers as well. Um, so I think the quicker we can get something to them, the better chance we have to take advantage of those rates, 'cause who, you know, um, stock market lost eight hundred and fifty points yesterday or something. I mean, it, things change quickly in, in the world of economics. Um, I just don't wanna lose out, uh, you know, no one expects rates to change in two months or three months, but, uh, but I would hate to look back and say what could've been. I mean, I, I thought the greatest piece of information Doug gave in the last week was, um, and he worded it differently than this, but, um, if, if the same borrowing we had done, uh, that, that we did for Battle Creek, we did today, I think the number was, it would cost us eighteen million more dollars today than it did, I mean, it would cost us eighteen million dollars less today than it did when, when the borrowing happened, because it went from a three point four percent bond rate to, to, you know, we're estimating one point five. And, uh, so I just think it's our responsibility, uh, to continue to push something. I, I can tell you, I went to bed last night thinking, I don't even wanna talk about this for months. I, I, but when I woke up this morning, I, I just think we have that responsibility to taxpayers to tackle this as quickly as we can, but... Uh, and, and I have ideas, but whenever we get in that...
All right, Mr. Moore?
And just as a reminder, I'm just talking about, setting us a date for this discussion.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And, and I agree, I, I would go with, with, with what Wayne's saying there. I think the sooner the better, I mean, I think it's obviously on everybody's mind right now. I, I have no interest in putting this off until people have, have let it get kinda cold in their minds. I mean, I think the discussion at least is ripe for us to have that. I kinda go back and forth on this, 'cause I know, part of me says we put a lot of time and effort, both staff and the board, trying to put together a plan that we feel like was solid. But I'm also a realist, and I understand that if it looks like we are only gonna get so much money, we do have a responsibility to revisit that amount and, um, figure out what's the best use based on what that amount is. Uh, because it's, it's something I think we have a responsibility at least to discuss and talk about, if there's maybe some things we could tweak. Um, I think, you know, Eric's brought that up several times, it's, it's what I've tried to encourage that we keep talking about, of revisiting these things. I mean, it was already four or five months ago that we kind of set these plans into motion, maybe a little longer than that, almost six months now. Um, and frankly, some things are gonna start to change over the next year as we look at this. And, you know, we, I know a lot of big discussion was going on with the county commission about what do we do with the Spring Hill High School building, were we to move ahead with this? And the reality is, although we have plans set out in a five-year plan, two years from now, there may be some data that shows we need to go a completely different direction, we didn't even discuss.
I said that exact thing last night.
Then you're, you're a wise man.
But no, I, I agree.
And I think that's the important thing that we do, so I think talking about this probably often and early is, is a wise choice for us to do, and make sure that we revisit and make sure what, some assumptions, 'cause we did make some assumptions, right? We made some assumptions based on data and what it may look like. Um, but I, I know I've already, in my mind, I know there's some curveballs that could very easily go one way or another, depending on what some schools do or where some gra- growth happens. And we need to be ready to, to admit that the plan we had in January may not be applicable in just another two months. And that's a realistic thing. So I would hope we would do it sooner. If we can set a date as soon as possible, I would be happy to, to discuss this quickly.
Okay.
I don't necessarily think we may even need to do a whole Saturday, because we've kinda got the guidance from them, what's making it fail. And I think that's the, the, the big part that we need to talk about. And, you know, first thing I think we need to do is make sure is that five-year plan still our five-year plan? I think that's the very first thing I would really recommend to the board, is that still the, the trajectory you wanna go, because I've talked to a few of you, and some of you don't feel that way anymore. But with that said, I think Chair Fullbright and myself have gotten a lot of feedback in the last few days, and so, you know, like he said, we're not saying we're gonna let them start telling us what to do, but they did give us feedback why it's failing. And it may not necessarily take a whole Saturday to get this carved out, because I agree with, uh, Mr. Lindsey, you, you know, the time to be fiscally responsible and act is now. I don't think there was a person in that building last night that would say, we don't need a new high school, or we need high school seats. I think everybody would agree, even the people in the audience that we thought were gonna just kill us, were like, yes, we need a new high school, we need a new high school. So I don't think they agree, I think we know where the sticking point was, where it failed. I, I think so, and I think Mr. Chair Fullbright might be the same way.
All right, uh, Mr. Hall?
I, I really wanna echo what's been said as well, I mean, I agree, I mean, we need to move forward as soon as possible. Uh, but going back to the data, I, I think that our data is proven inaccurate. I think that we now know that it's growing, we're growing faster than what our data showed in January. Uh, our data in January, I mean, thirteen percent a year for the next, well, they, they didn't say until the next, but that's what we're projecting, and so every year we wait, we're not getting smaller, and it's only gonna get bigger price-wise. Um, and I think they realize that, I, I don't know if they're willing to move forward on anything, I'm not sure at this point.
Uh, Mr. Lindsey?
Uh, do we, do we know if the intent is for them to move forward with the budget process, uh, without us bringing anything back, or are they gonna give us any time to, even a week to come up with? So they're, I, I know they had a budget meeting today, the full commission on Thursday, so they plan on going from there, so...
Well, can I address that? Doug, uh, if, if the borrowing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if the borrowing were gonna require payment this year, we would have to have it in this budget year for approval, correct? Okay, you explain it, 'cause maybe I'm off-base.
They, we don't have the principal payment this year, so, for example, we can go ahead and pass the budget, and then we will be fine to go ahead and take care of, uh, just the interest payment if we borrow. But the later we borrow, the later we have to make the principal and interest payment, so that's... So, that's why for, which is usually, this is a very rare occurrence. You do a capital request maybe in August after the budget's been sent off to the state, and that seemed to be what they were leaning towards. I don't want to speak for them, but, uh, you know, that is what I got from the meeting tonight is that we're going to go ahead and move, move forward with our budgets, get those processed, get them sent to the state. Hopefully, they all pass, and, and we are not sitting back here again for that. And then, um, a, a request can be brought, you know, after that. Uh, that's, that's the feeling I got, just me personally.
Yeah. Mr. Lindsay.
But that, and, um, Mr. Fullbright, you might have been on the commission when Columbia Central was built, and they might have done the same thing then. But that forces them, if they were to approve this borrowing out after budget approval, then they are forced next budget year to raise taxes.
No. Unless they can come up with some other sort of revenue source or sales tax improves, they get, they get a little bit of time to work on that. The, that cost doesn't take effect. We could make it one year, uh, without them doing something, so, yeah.
All right, I guess then, uh, since this may not require a whole Saturday-type retreat, how about a special call meeting sometime the first half of August? Is that more appealing than this? Or is it something we feel like we could tackle at a dedicated work session? Go ahead.
I thought that we were going to have, uh, in the retreat, we were going to look at principal salaries, the salary, uh, schedule, uh, you know, our strategic plan for where we want to be in five years, 10 years with our teachers and, and staff and all of that. We, I know we alluded to that early on in the, a budget process, and I think that's just an entirely different subject. Uh, um, so I, I, I thought there were a lot of things we wanted to discuss in this retreat.
Okay, fair enough. At the board meeting for the capital plans? Um, go ahead.
I can provide, we, we've spent some time talking about the entire plan. You know, we did not present two of the items that were on the five-year plan. There, there's a second building at Calioca and additional classroom space, be it a new building or expansion in the City of Columbia. Those were not on there. But we have pricing on all of those types of projects. Um, I've spoken with, with Mr. Spencer and with Mr. Hewlett about timelines, how many projects we can manage at one time, price, different things like that. So, we have information. We also have current housing information for Columbia, for Spring Hill, for Mount Pleasant, for the county. Uh, as far as how much time we need together, even if we adjusted the five-year plan, we still know our top two needs are, are high school and elementary seats. So, as much time, most of what we've talked about hasn't changed. The details surrounding some of the supportings have, and then just your direction from that. So, we can provide and do in an afternoon, at a work session, at a board meeting. You tell us, and we'll bring the information that you want. I just don't, it can be combined within a retreat, but if you want to go ahead and do this, because it is a fresh conversation and because every, every month we wait to get in front of them, those interest rates have the possibility of climbing. And then part of what we've sold to them, not sold to them, but we've had the huge discussions about, right now's the time to do this. Uh, and we could have something happen, and in two to three months, that not be the case, and, and it kind of maybe gets away. So, we can do when you're ready.
I, I like that idea, and I, I tend to think we should go on and ask for those things. Uh, one of the things I've heard in all this is some commissioners saying we're not taking care of our Columbia needs, we're not taking care of, well, you know, Calioca's going to need expansion, Mount Pleasant and all that. It's almost like if we take care of ev, I mean, honestly, I, I know it's a rough road, but I think we need to ask for what we need. Uh, and those are things I, I would tend to think maybe our capital plan would be more.
Mr. Moore.
So, I know one thing that I had seen from some of the comments from the County Commission, and I would, how do I put this? Gently like to remind them that we, in my opinion, I think there's a, a time for them to give good feedback. And it was when we had numerous meetings about our facilities' five-year plan, when the public and commissioners could easily have sat in on those meetings and, and seen that we, in fact, do have a plan. We put a lot of time and effort, and I know staff, I know Eric put a lot of, and we, I was able to speak to one commissioner on the side, and at the end of that phone call, um, they frankly said, "You guys really have looked at almost every one of these that I brought up." And I said, "Yes, we have." And I think maybe there's, there's some, some misunderstandings there that, that's time was put into it. And I would encourage them, again, I know it's a little late for this year, but as we continue to revisit this plan, which has been something Eric has brought up that we should continue to do, that those commissioners get involved on that part, so that we're not waiting to the last minute where we, we put a lot of effort into a plan, we take it to them, and then they bring ideas up that we could have frankly discussed during the process if they felt like those were things we should move towards as a county. And I welcome their input then. And we could fold those into discussions and flesh them out without having to do this at the last minute and scrambling to try to change what our plans already are. Um, that's frustrating on this end, because that's where we're at. We're trying to scramble to put things back together that frankly, these are discussions, all of these commissioners that have concerns about maybe what we should do with Spring Hill High School, what we should do in that area, what we should do in the Columbia area. Could have been brought to us in the, in the fall and winter of last year. We could have talked about those things, and, and maybe we could have changed some things and with some thoughtful processes of how they weighed out. It's just hard to do that at this point. Um, as far as the meetings, get back to that part. I would be happy to have two things here. I would like to see personally a dedicated facilities work session, uh, just a regular work session meeting where we talk about that, and maybe that would go to the next board meeting, or maybe have a special call. I don't know how you want to do that. Um, but as far as a retreat, I think there are other issues that, in my opinion, are retreat-worthy that are not tied to facilities. I think I would probably, I would prefer to see those separated.
Well, then that leads us to a discussion then. Do we want to do a special called work session or put it on the 17th at our regular one? Um, that then would put the request going before the County Commission, whatever we came up with going into September. If we did it before the budget meeting, we could get it in this month still. Be a little rushed, but at least we could have some dedicated time to talk. How, how are we feeling about a special meeting versus what we've already got scheduled? Moore?
Uh, I think that's probably going to be up to the, uh, the people that feel like maybe what we already have is, is way out, out of line with where they want to be. Um, and they want to really kind of flesh out doing something different. Um, if, because honestly, discussions are a lot quicker. If most people feel like the plan we have is, is correct, and maybe we just ask for more money, as Ms. Kinser said, that's kind of a simple discussion that doesn't take a lot of time. If some board members feel like we want to really flesh out some additional options, look at some different directions, maybe some things that some commissioners brought up, we may need some lengthy time to go through that and, and have staff help us with some numbers to see if that works out.
What do you think? Mr. Perryman, do you think this is something we could handle at a board meeting the 3rd of August? Would we, would we, that, I mean, you know kind of what we've discussed, and you know what the County Commission is discussing. Are we looking at a three-hour conversation?
I, I don't.
Are we looking at a 30-minute?
I don't know. I'm going to say this just as plainly as I can, you know I do that sometimes. A, a board meeting, I'm fearful, has a, an audience that sways um, what people really think and how they really say it. And I, and I know that's just how that works. Even with the commission, when it's just the committee, conversation's completely different than when there's a crowd in the room. Um, I, I think just a couple of hours where, and, and it's open. If someone wants to come, that's fine. But I think where it can be more of the informal discussion like we've done in work sessions, or even like we used to do in committee, when we sat around a table and we said, "This is what we're doing, this is where we are." You know the needs. Um, and I will tell you that, that we did not present more elementary classrooms in Columbia for, for 5th grade. But 5th grade gets huge, um, huge conversation out of the commission. But they, they really like that talk, they want that. So, we, we can look at, and, and I would remind everyone that while they balk on Spring Hill High School, they removed the funding for Spring Hill High School and still voted no last night. So, they can tell you, well, we didn't like the Spring Hill High School portion of that, they took it out and still voted no. So, um, we can discuss what we want to do around that topic. I think we have options and ideas for you, uh, surrounding that. Uh, and then I think that one thing we do have to maybe rediscover is City of Columbia approvals have topped 6,000 in new home approvals. Um, I hate to say it because they're going to be mad at me, but basically, if you request it be approved, it's going through right now. Bear Creek Pike I-65 interchange has 1,000 homes that have been approved around it. Uh, and they're building, they're moving dirt, they're getting ready to do it. So, we've seen a little bit of change. Monsanto Land that we talked about was somewhere in the future, is actually starting to occur. Um, so City of Columbia may need some discussion on that. But again, our top two needs, which are the high school seats in the northern part of the county for Spring Hill and an elementary school on that north side, they still remain the, the top two needs. So, I think we can work through, through most everything fairly quickly. As far as what, the question would be, do we want to give them our top needs or just want to send everything? And, and I think that's where discussion may revolve a little bit more around long-term for City of Columbia.
Well, then let's just plan to tackle this at our board meeting on the 3rd. And if we see that we need additional time or we can't come to any conclusion, we can schedule a special meeting at that point for a work session? All right, let's do that then. I appreciate, oh, Mr. Lindsay, did you have something to add to that?
I'll just, just one comment that, I think that we, this board as a whole, we, we presented our plan, and we think our plan's the best. But we may be in, and we are in a position now, I think, that we have to set our egos aside and come up with a plan that may, we may not think is the best, but we still have to get seats in Spring Hill somehow. It, uh, it doesn't appear that they want to build a, a new school right now because they, they had multiple opportunities last, last night to do that, and then, uh, previously also. So, so we, we may have to, uh, go a different route, and it may not be the route that we think's best, uh, right now. Uh, but, but, so we, we may just have to look at things differently. And, uh, somebody said it a while ago, I, it's not that they're, that we're being told what to do, but, but in, uh, I think, Mr. Fullbright, I heard you say, it might have been last week, but you made a statement up there that what, what you witnessed was, was not cooperation. And, uh, and I get that, but, but we still have to be, from our stance, we still have to try to form some type of relationship and, and, and there be some type of cooperation, or we're not going to get anything done. I mean, the worst thing we can do right now is nothing. I mean, we, we have to do something. And, and believe me, I, like I said, last night, I, I thought to myself, "Let's just do nothing, and, and we'll figure it out next year, or two years, or five years, or whenever." But, but in reality, when you, when you get emotions out of it, the worst thing we can do is nothing.
Well, and that kind of goes back to the, just sitting here thinking, "I can plan a great trip to go to Nashville, but if I don't have gas in my car, all my plans are worthless." Mr. Howe.
Mr. Perryman, can you send us everything you've compiled as far as pricing? And that way, we can all kind of start going.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can, I can start sending those, those items to you. Mr. Hickman actually shared out the link to the GIS map for the City of Columbia. If you can't make it work, we'll resend it to you. Uh, and they actually have a, a really deep map. You scroll over a subdivision, and it actually shows up and shows you how many are approved and how many are built. Uh, and, and they, they've worked on that. I, I will say, Mr. Hickman and myself have spent a good time talking to the municipalities. I don't know that it's our job or your job to bridge the conversation amongst all of them, but I think that's where we are. But, um, in my time in front of the commission, they, they are, it's a very big disconnect between what the cities are approving and what the commission is, is knowing that they're taking on to fund. And while that may not be our place, it may be that we kind of become the, the mediator for conversation. Um, and, and there are needs beyond schools, but they are very much, you know, the City of Columbia says, "If we approve, this, this neighborhood will, what will it do to y'all?" We've already approved 6,000 houses, another hundred, oh, well. Um, the conversation should have been taking place in the past, and it hadn't. But, but we're trying to do that on your behalf. But we will send you links, and I'll send you pricing, uh, with different options that they have discussed with us, uh, in our time in front of them.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Moore, yours is the last light, and then we're moving on.
Just, Eric, can you make sure also, and I always, I ask this almost every time, if we get no funding, can we have an idea? I would like to at least have a brief discussion about what that looks like for us and what that means if, if, if they can't come to an agreement. Realistically, what does that mean? We have to do as far as facilities for next year, and then probably two years out is what I would say to, general idea of that.
Yeah, if you could just work on that. All right, moving on. We've asked for a lot of policies to be added to this month's work session. Uh, we'll turn it over.
These are all policies that were, changes that were due to law that happened this year for July. Um, would you guys like me to walk through each policy and talk about them? Would you like me to answer the policies you have questions and concerns on? Because there are a lot.
I think that would be the more appropriate way to do it. If there is any specific questions on any of these policies. Uh, Ms. Irvin.
Sure, I've looked through some of them and have notes. Let me get a, get each one up. Um, section 4.4.9, uh, the family life education. Um, I tried to reference that back to our current policy. I did not see it there.
It's a new policy.
It is a new policy.
Yes, sorry, I tried to put that on the new ones, I guess. Yeah, it's the new, new policy, yes, sorry.
Yes, and I just wanted to make sure, since we, you know, we're.
Sure.
Um, so it's family life education, which I, I do agree that that needs to be taught. But as you know, some of our neighboring counties have had different controversies about, to the extent and such. And the way this reads, um, it looks pretty, um, the way it reads without defining everything, it looks pretty, um, pretty okay to me. But it doesn't say like when, like what age or what grade they're going to begin these conversations. And that's a concern to me. Are these going to be middle school conversations? Are they going to be high school conversations? That's one question. And then the depth of, um, because, um, I mean, I hate to even talk about this, but like I know that I've had people from our neighboring county mention that they've had their elementary kids being taught about abortion, and that's not something I'm okay with. So, I want to make sure that when we're talking about family life education, I want to know, one, where is our curriculum coming from? Into what extent, into what age range, um, into what depth? I don't know if those have been thought about or not, but, um.
We actually already have a program that we use for this. Um, the law that changed, there were some districts that had to already have this, depending on what their teen pregnancy rates were. Now, the state's requiring every LEA to have this policy. So, um, Yvette Carter, she already, um, they already do have this program that's in place. The state law didn't state if it was which grades, because that was a concern, was there's some districts who actually don't even have high schools, so they're like, "Well, hang on, why are we teaching this?" Uh, it does say age-appropriate. Um, perhaps if we want to define in a procedure what our age-appropriate classes would be, um, or we can, this, this was a TSBA model policy, so if we'd like to adjust something.
I mean, personally, I don't know what the right age is for that. But I definitely, I don't know. I probably like live under a rock compared to some people, so I'm probably not the best guide of that. But I personally would not want my elementary student, me personally, getting a CTE class unless it was about the basics of the human functions. But that's me, that's something we may, we need to talk about more in depth and define those things. And also, um, it says here that the only, like, um, well, I could quote it, but the only, um, like basically preventative measure being taught is abstinence. I like that. I don't want to be personally educating kids on things that I think their parents need to. I think, um, like I say, I don't like having these conversations, but I also want to protect, um, our children and the innocence and allow our parents to do what they need to do, and not give them the education they need, but not overstep our bounds either. So, I don't know if anybody else has got any comments or not, but I just, that's the only things that come to my mind.
Yeah, it does, the policy would allow for a parent or guardian to opt out of this program. Yeah, it, it does, the policy would allow for a parent or guardian to opt out of this program. So, that they would be given this information, this would be taught, and then the parent can opt out of the program if you don't want your student in that program at all.
And I think we do need to define what kind of curriculum that is, because I do think there have been some controversial curriculums, um, in different areas. So, that was one thing. Um, another thing I'd like to go, if, unless anybody else has anything, I'd like, I have, I've got like a few of these policies I had wanted to ask questions about.
Keep going, yes.
Just keep going, okay?
Can I address the, we can, we don't have the, we do work with Centerstone to teach this family life curriculum. We can have them bring or send copies of their curriculum with a, it is state approved and we do, uh, and we actually have an MOU sitting on the desk right now that, you know, we, uh, now that this is in place, that's what Ms. Carter did. She, uh, looked at what vendors do that and Centerstone's already working in our system and that's what we are, that's what our intent is. And I think we want to, you know, our target is ninth grade, uh, we're thinking eighth or ninth grade. So, uh, we're happy to have that vendor either send curriculum or, or bring it to you, whichever one you, uh, but I think the, the law just says we have to implement the program.
That's fine, yeah, and I, I probably would like to have it defined. Um, on the next one, if, unless anybody else has, is, um, the second, um, number ten, um, sorry, I'm scrolling ahead, it's four point four ten, the interscholastic athletics.
Mm-huh.
Um, a line, it's actually on page one, line twenty through twenty-two, I think.
Which version are you, the red line, the current?
I'm, I'm looking at the red line, because that helped me see what was there and what had changed, thank you. Um, basically starting in nineteen and I'll just read it since I know everyone doesn't have it up. It says, "The superintendent or his or her designated will allocate coaching supplements to each eligible school. Schools cannot add a new sport without permission from the school board and the request must be made by February first prior to the new fiscal year." And that was crossed out, correct? Or was that added too? I thought it had been crossed out, like as in removed.
Some of these, uh, I moved from one section, so I like, it redlines it, so I make sure it doesn't, it didn't get put back in a different section.
Removed or?
That, that has been the, the policy. I don't know where it particularly was, but they would have to, any, any additions had to be done by a certain date and not after, and you're shaking your head, huh, February. So, that's just, maybe, maybe they've moved it from another place, but that's what we've done in the past.
Well, I just wanted to make sure.
It's on page one, so I just moved it around, I apologize. I was just trying to clean up the policy so they all fit around. And the final version, it's on page one, lines nineteen through twenty-one.
Okay, so just for time's sake, basically what I was wanting to make sure was that that was basically not giving a principal the, the opportunity to allow, um, like new sports without approval from the board or, or allow supplements, because what, just, I'm from a very athletic family. I could just see like, basically not wanting them to give like an unfair, um, supplement to one school just to attract like, you know, I don't know, but a superstar coach there. It's not that, that's not what we're talking about here then.
No, I, I mean, I didn't change the act, what you guys had in place, I just moved it to a different spot and like to the front of the policy, so I didn't change any of the actual content of that.
Can I, can I comment for her? I think that, that it's done like that for the, for the reason, first of all, stipends are budgeted. So, we, if you're going to have a wrestling coach, let's say, I don't know if they have one at Santa Fe, let's say, a wrestling coach and you want to have one, you can't just come in and say, I'm going to have one because it involves a budgeted item. So, they have to have it in by February first prior to the budget.
Right.
So, they can't just go out and say.
That's what I didn't want them to say, like, I'm creating this new physician and now we're going to pay him instead of three thousand, we're paying him ten thousand, so that's not happening, okay?
Yeah, no.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody had asked about that and I said, well, I think there's a reason it says February one, just even though I'm new here, the, I've seen with the budget process, I came right in time to see all that. Um, okay? Um, but I, I'm well aware of how you need to have all those numbers in and how, you know, the different meetings that take place, so.
And let me butt in, and coaching supplements are set amounts approved by the board. There's no, they didn't get, they don't get to determine.
And I agree, I thought that had been redlined out and that's what I wanted to make sure had not happened, so.
No, I mean, it's not redlined out, yeah, it's in there, it's just on the first page instead of where it was before.
Thank you for that. And then, um, moving, unless anybody else has anything, to four point four point twelve, this is on testing programs, um, let's see here, let me get to the right, I think it's on page two. I apologize, I try to make notes ahead of time. Um, this is on the red line, okay. On page two, line items five through seven, this is talking about the Tennessee Ready Testing and about using, and we've had this conversation briefly with the board, um, in the past, but basically making their, um, like Tennessee Ready Test as a percentage of their final grade and, and it's set as approved by the board. So, it looked like, if I'm reading this correctly, it had been modified. It looked like it had grades three through five originally at, um, zero to fifteen percent, but it looks like that had just been scratched to zero, which I'm okay with. I don't know if everybody else is or not. But then B, grade six through eight, it looks like it originally had zero percent and it looks like that's been modified to ten to fifteen percent. And then grade nines through twelve, where it had been fifteen, it had been, I think, or fif- I'm not sure if it's fifteen to twenty now or if it was fifteen to twenty now. But I just wanted to make sure we, first of all, I want to make sure, are we doing, um, have we compared that to what other districts are doing? And are we staying, um, um, uniform to that? Because I ran some numbers myself, because that was a, a conversation we had in the past. But what I don't want to do, I, I'm not a big fan of testing, especially T and Ready Tests, because I've seen kids myself that a kid can have a horrible day and be a rock star kid and then do awful and it bring their grades down. And especially if we've got kids in high school that are competing for things such as, um, scholarships and I, I don't want to hurt our kids with this. So, I'm just curious, why are we making these changes? Is it by what the state told us we need to do or are all districts doing it?
There were some changes that did have to be made, uh, by state law. It narrowed it and then the actual percentages that were chosen by the instruction department. So, the, the range did have to change, um, per law and then what the actual, they'd stuck with just a percentage rather than the range. And I, sorry, I realized that the final version that got uploaded actually was still the red line version.
And that's what I'm looking at, the red line version, it helps me see, so. Um, and I apologize for that. I know I'm putting you on the spot with this and I don't mean to. But, um, I just want to make sure we're, we're doing what everybody else is doing, because I don't want to, um, not that I care about doing what everybody else is doing, but when it comes to our kids, I don't want to give them an unfair advantage just because we thought it was a good idea.
I mean, this isn't within the state guidelines, the percentages that are being selected.
And do you know, in this? Yeah, absolutely. It was basically.
No, I can't, I, I, the, all these ones that are, that set with like the instruction department, I got with all of them.
See, that's what I thought you were saying, was that the state, um, set it.
Well, the state did, they did give a different range, so the range had to be selected, which I gave instruction, this is your range that you have to choose from per state guidelines and then they pick the specific percentage that was here, so.
Yes, we, uh, with input from principals and everybody looked at the range in elementary to be, uh, no percentage. Uh, a- as you know, we had the opportunity, uh, to, the, the range went back, it didn't count at all due to COVID last year. And so, uh, we came back to what the law required to give us a range. And then we, uh, to, to move back, we came to zero in, in elementary, ten percent in middle school and fifteen, back to the fifteen percent in high school like we had it before. Um, we could always come back and, and address those each year. Uh, we thought that those were reasonable, given that, um, uh, with TCAP testing and the wa- the way it flows and, and, uh, what's going on, that that, uh, was, was our recommendation.
So, I've been out of education for going on nine years, um, largely. So, whenever I taught, the way kids were scored is they were scored, um, and, and this has probably changed, this is my question, is has this changed? Because they were scored on a percentile, is that still the case? So, someone's going to score a ten, because they're going to be in the tenth percentile of the state, or someone else is going to score ninety-nine, no granted, I hope. But realistically, we have a range, so is there score, it's not like a, out of a hundred percent. That's my problem with it, is out of a hundred questions, even if they scored a seventy per se and they're like in the twentieth percentile, then I have a problem with that. And I know that's not normally how it works, but I just don't want to hurt kids.
It's actually, we use the cube root method and I cannot explain how the whole cube root method works. But it's, uh, they send us a raw score and we convert the raw score using the cube root method, which is typically in the favor of the students.
Okay.
Um, so, you don't, I'm not going to say we never have a student who scores a ten percentile on the, on the T and Ready, but for the most part, those scores fall in a much higher range than that. So, it's not their literal percentile score that they score on the T and Ready or the EOC. And then you still have the option that the state law, I don't think has changed on this. If we don't get scores back within a, a window of time, then we don't have to count them into our, um, our students' grades.
I do, I do understand that, like I say, but if somebody scored, if it was a tenth percentile, I mean, I've seen kids, just like I say, bomb the test. It's one test, one day of their life, one window, and I just don't want to ruin a kid academically by it. That's my concern, so.
These are set all at the state minimum, so you can't.
Are they or are they the range we chose?
What this, what this is being, the range that's being suggested is at the very minimum that the state will allow for each age bracket, for grade brackets, sorry.
Okay.
So, grade three through five, you must select between zero and twenty-five. From grade six through eight, you have to select a range somewhere between ten and twenty-five. And nine through twelve has to be fifteen through twenty-five.
Okay.
So, they've selected zero, ten and fifteen.
Sure, so that's what I'm saying, if it's comparative of what the state is, then I.
Yeah, that's the lowest that you can do per the state guideline.
Thank you for that.
Mm-huh.
And then, um, let's see here, I think it may be the same policy, let's see, I'm trying to read my notes. Um, um.
Are you moving on to the next one?
This is still on that same policy.
Just don't let me forget him before you move on.
Okay, yeah, Austin, if you want to go ahead.
Mine was just on those percentages, I, I'm just curious of why you lowered to the state minimum on it. Personally, I'm not, I'm not the kind of person who thinks tests like that are intimidating for kids. A lot of times that's what, that's the shining light at the end of tunnel. If you're in a class and you have a test that's fifteen percent, uh, that actually motivates in my experience. Uh, so, I was just wondering where the thought process to lower to the minimum would be.
Our, our intent was given, the, the administration of the test has been, um, hasn't been particularly, uh, uh, consistent. And so, uh, rather than put that out there that we would go to the high percentage and then have to go back and change it, uh, I think we want to continue to encourage kids like you, like you said, that this test is important, it does, uh, give you a measure of progress and where you are uh, and without the pressure of the percentage, uh, being there. Although, a- as you move in upper grades, you know, you need that sometimes to, to help, uh, kids realize the importance of it. So, uh, first with the, you know, we typically have good success in, in elementary grades with, uh, uh, trying to do their best on the test. Um, uh, that kind of waxes as we move toward the other grades. That's why you have a percentage there to help, uh, give some incentive to, to, to do better. Like you said, to, you know, maybe that's a chance to move your grade out of the, uh, uh, where it was because you performed well on the summative assessment.
So, Austin, on that, I would like to also say why I feel differently about it is this is not a test that's prepared, to my understanding, by the teacher or even by our county. This is a state prepared test and what happens, um, when I was in the classroom is you teach to a set of curriculum standards and a lot of times, um, and this may sound terrible, but in reality, teachers don't get to all of those curriculum standards. They try really hard, but things happen sometimes that cause them not to, like just different, whatever, um, being out, pandemics, yeah, or what, I know that this year is different, but even like if we have a year full of excessive snow and we miss a lot. So, that's where I'm saying I don't want to penalize our kids, because those standards are still on that test regardless. If it was something that a teacher designed, then I would feel a little bit differently about it. Um, on that same policy, I'm sorry, but these are things I think are worth talking about. Uh, line twelve, it says, interest, um, I'll just read it to you, interest inventory shall be made available. And it has seventh and eighth grade, middle schoolers and ninth grade. And it crossed out just to say middle schoolers and ninth grade. All I wanted to say about this is, um, I have a this year, um, upcoming this year, tenth grader and I can tell you that the way that that's changed, my last year, uh, middle schooler had this done. My now going into tenth grader has never had this done. So, we're missing that gap, I want to point that out. Our tenth graders need that this year. They may not need it ever again, but they've not had it. I mean, my kid's in high school and I'm like, have they not given you any direction about, have they not had these conversations? And they have not, at least at my school. So, I do not want that to go without saying that I would like to see that changed that for at least this year only, that we look at tenth grade as well. Um, and then, um, page three of the same policy.
On, on that, if I can.
Yes.
Um, the, why it was selected middle schools and ninth graders? Cause that was the guidance given to us by the, by the state. So, we can see if we can add in a, additional, but that was what we had.
I just want you guys to really hear me on that. COVID messed these kids up with that and I don't want them to fall through the cracks. So, I hope we can, even if it's just an internal memo that we make sure happen, um, I just want to make note of that. Um, and then the last page of this document, it's on line twelve. It just basically talks about all how this should be in the student handbook. And all I wanted to say on that is that I personally have not been given a copy of the student handbook and I don't know when. So, something, and this is totally different than this policy, but it made me bring to light that I hope that whenever we're giving out our student packets of information for the, and I know it may be different this year as we did all online enrollment, but I want our parents to know where that handbook is at. Cause I get calls all the time about people who have no clue, like they're asking me, what stress code? What's this, what's that? And I'm like, what's in the handbook? It's online, and like, well, we didn't know that, we had no clue. So, just wanted to say that. Um, and I'm trying to hurry, um, I'd like to move on to, um, number four point four.
Sure, can I ask one question on that policy? Um, when we changed line twelve, um, from making it available to seventh and eighth graders to middle schoolers and ninth grade, um, does that increase our cost? Cause I mean, obviously our middle schools are fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth. There's no cost for the career assessment and, okay, thank you.
All right, sorry, I read through all of this and I'm sorry, but it, um, so four point four point fourteen, um, which is about tenure, granting tenure. I wanted to bring this up because this is a conversation we're having about how hard it is to find employees and I totally agree. But I've had some people in my ear about, um, different people that were let go and the reasons around that. Some consider a great teacher, some not so much, and my opinions are not even worth mentioning. But what I wanted to point out is that on page two, line sixteen through twenty, it says, um, this is like item five, it says, "A teacher who is eligible for tenure, but tenure is denied, shall not be rehired beyond the contract year." And then.
That's state law.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, is that state law?
Yes, ma'am.
Cause then I know on a later policy, it comes back and says that they may then be able to reapply within the district. That was on a different policy, is that correct? That, because here's my thing, I've seen sometimes, and I know you guys have too, and if it's state law, we have no, no say in it, but sometimes it's a conflict of personality. You know what I'm saying? Sometimes two people just may not get along, so I, I was wondering what, if we were being.
That is, by being rehired, they have to be given a non-renewal letter at the end of that year. So, if you're eligible, if you become eligible for tenure and that person, the principal or the superintendent decides to deny tenure, like they are not going to grant tenure, then they have to be non-renewed for that year. It doesn't mean you can't be rehired later by the district.
And then on the last page of, um, this same, um, policy, um, which is page three, number nine, it basically goes in and talks about, I'm going to sum it up, which means I'm probably going to mess it up, but from my memory, it talks about basically any ten, any teacher can lose their tenure if they have two consecutive years of like unsuccessful results. I'm okay with that. But what I'm wondering about is number nine, it says, "The section does not apply to teachers who acquire tenure prior to July first, two thousand and eleven."
Yeah, it's state law.
It's state law, okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, and then, I'm sorry, I'm almost to the end of my list, I'm sorry with this, guys, but four point four point sixteen, separation practices, um, line twenty-seven. I got my notes, I'm able to move quicker than my hands are. Uh, wait a minute. Um, well, basically, it's four point four point sixteen, I think I got the wrong one pulled up. But it's about separation practices for non-tenure teachers. And in my notes, which is not what I'm reading on the actual screen, it says, line twenty-seven says something to the effect of, "Any teacher that's not renewed", like basically they're upcoming on their, their tenure, that we would be given a thirty-day notice, um, letting us know that we're letting them go. I haven't seen that happen, is that happening?
Uh, that the teacher gets a thirty? Uh, that the teacher gets a thirty-day notice of non-renewal?
It says the board will. Here it is. It's page two of that document. "The board shall be notified at the next regular board." Let me, we'll go back to twenty-four. This is page two of that. Page twenty-four, it says, "The superintendent of schools is under no obligation to reemploy non-tenure teachers at the end of their contract period. If the superintendent of schools determines not to renew the contract of a non-tenure teacher, the following actions shall be taken." Number one, line twenty-seven, "The board shall be notified at the regular, at the next regular board meeting. And two, written notice of non-renewal shall be within five days." I'm assuming that goes to the teacher.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm okay with that. But here's what, what reason why I point that out. I've had people contact me saying, "I'm mad. So-and-so didn't get rehired. They're the best thing that ever happened." And I'm like, "I don't know. I have no clue." So I would kind of like to know, just so I can kind of offset that.
It's on the personnel report.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I've been looking for specific names and I haven't seen them. Maybe I'm wrong. That's very likely. So we're just going to chalk that up to me being wrong.
Sometimes people also are, uh, may resign.
I've seen resignations. I have not seen this situation. So I've seen the resignations like on the last time. I've been being very mindful of it.
I will say sometimes the personnel report lags, like what you know, just because they're cut off to put it on our agenda.
Okay.
In a different date. So something that happens after that personnel report wouldn't be on ours. It, it'll be on the next one. So sometimes our information is kind of like a month behind, depending upon when the action happens.
Yeah. For the non-renewals, they should have been on the, the June one, but.
I didn't see it, but.
And sometimes people, uh, decide to resign.
But then again, hang on, let me say, I didn't see it, but I was also traveling. So again, I'm going to blame myself because maybe it was on me. So, um, I just want to know to where if I get the calls, mad, I don't want to be like, really? They didn't get rehired? Because that's how it's almost like I have no clue and I don't want to be.
You're not going to know.
You're never going to know. Okay.
The principal has had a reason for it.
No, I know that. I know. And I support that.
I, I think that I have to be, well, I'm sorry.
I know, and I know, but I'm just saying it's kind of hard to, they think we know all and when we don't know all, it's like, I don't know. I have no clue. All right. My last one on this section, and then I'll leave you alone. It's four point four, point eighteen, the updated policy, the attendance. All right. So I read through this and these are my questions. Basically, it's talking about the timelines. And it's like if they're there for a half a day, they're considered present. Um, I didn't see, and I'm going through my notes, which is really bad because I was working while I was doing this. I was double, double doing things today, but I didn't see anything about excessive tardies. Because let me tell you a situation that, that made me trigger this. Um, when I was helping with that interim position, um, the year before I got on the board, we had a kid that was notorious in middle school for just checking out at noon every day and going home. Do we have anything that's catching those kids who were just like notorious, um, I'm done at noon? I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it wasn't happening then. I mean, because they, if they did, they would have been in some kind of major trouble.
I'll, I'll defer to.
Because it says that they're present, if they're there for at least half a day. And it was, it was a real, I, I don't know. So I'm just making sure.
I mean, they would be caught on early signouts. So, I mean, we would address that if students were continuing signing out, if they didn't have a, if there wasn't a reason why they were signing out early. Uh, they couldn't just sign out early. I mean, the, the, the attending past eleven seventeen is really for the district and emergencies to be able to, you know, if we can make a half a day, we'll be able to count that day. Sometimes when we have, uh, we have to dismiss school early or, uh, if we have early dismissal days, uh, that time gives us, if we go to that time, then that's counted as a full school day rather than a half day.
Okay. No, go ahead.
Uh, then they miss that many days. It's on their report card. So attendance is followed, yes. But it's up to the attendance clerk to do that.
Okay. Maybe it was just an internal problem. I don't know. That's what brought it to my mind. And then on the flip side of that, it talks about, um, on page four of that, about makeup work being limited to three days, which I appreciate. But it also says if time allows, and I know most teachers are really good about working with kids. I just want to make sure that we're not having allowance for some really hard teacher just to not let a kid make it up. If, you know, the class is really busy that day. But anyway, those are all of my comments in this section. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the policies? Ms. Parker?
Sorry. I have one. Um, I think it's update policy one point eight zero one one, but then it says remove policy one point eight zero, one point eight zero one one point three. But I didn't see that one on there. Do you know what that one covers or why we had to get rid of it? Was it just incorporated?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry for not, I didn't think about putting that one on there. Um, what that one covered was being put into place for, I'm assuming it was during Covid. And when the district could designate the certain employees as essential, the state changed the law to where they're not allowing you to designate your employee as an essential, like they can't do that anymore. So at the beginning of the pandemic, yeah, they updated the model policies to, to reflect that. And so now we have to change that. And so it looks like what this board did, instead of putting it into the emergency closing policy, they created this separate one in the one point one eight, yeah, point three or whatever that was. So that was just removing that language that we're no longer allowed to designate. I can pull that up real quick online and read it for you. It's not very long.
Now that you mention it, I think I remember something about this.
Yeah. Yeah. It says, literally the title of his emergency designation, employee designation during emergency closures is the title of the policy itself. Um, so that's why we're not allowed to do that anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry. I should have included that one.
Oh, it's okay. Um, then Jake, I have a question for you on this particular policy. Um, because, you know, it allows in the event of an emergency for the superintendent to continue pay during that time, which I know we did before, and Doug's not here, but, you know, we also had, had a deficit at that time too. So is it, does he still have to follow the budget part as well if there's?
Which policy is it?
It's, um, policy one point eight zero one one, under four point four three.
Four point four three.
The very beginning.
Yes. I mean, there was a provision in there that says, as, uh, as funding allowed. Social payments cannot exceed the number of days budgeted for each employee. Is that what you're talking about?
Which line?
Uh, the very last line, nineteen twenty.
Okay, yes. So you think that?
Yeah, I think that covers.
Perfect.
Okay. I think that, uh.
Hey, real quick before we get off.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't there some talk in the legislature about, and hopefully we never experience a pandemic again, but th- there was some talk about whether superintendents actually had the authority to close schools like they did because that, that actually changed the calendar, which is our responsibility. Did anything ever come of that or it just kind of fell by the wayside?
Nothing I know of. I, I don't think they ever, and you know, with the, with the delegation of authority to the county mayors and everything that went on, I don't think they ever really resolved that question.
They, well, it did add, and I don't know if it necessarily means a pandemic, but it did say a public health emergency. So that could maybe include a pandemic, but that was added to this policy that where the, the board authorizes the superintendent of schools to close schools in the event of hazardous weather, a public health emergency or any other emergency which presents the threat to safety, health of students, staff members, or school property.
That applies to that.
But to the extent that the board has that authority, I, I guess is, is what you're asking to.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think the question that came about was, you know, we, we have built-in snow days. We have those kind of things. But when schools closed in, in May and in March of two thousand and twenty, that, that totally altered the calendar. And, and I think Mr. Moore's not here. I, I think he, he even had some question about that on this board, that who really had that authority to cancel the remainder of the school year?
Yeah. That's a, that's a good question. And that, that I don't, I don't know and I can't tell you as we, as we sit here. Because I, I don't think they ever got to that point. I mean, I think, like I said, it got, that authority got delegated to some degree down to the county mayors. But, uh, a, as far as the State Board of Education or, or being able to alter that calendar, I don't know that they ever got to that point.
Okay. Which one of these, I'm assuming from this discussion, they're not all going on consent agenda. Which ones do we want to pull off? Any?
The family life education. I'd like to see an age or grade defined in that, um, personally, if that's possible. I don't know if that's possible or not. If I'm asking too much, then.
In the meantime, could, could they send us the curriculum? Scott said that they could send us and let us look at that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that too.
Curriculum, maybe pull just that part.
Yeah, and that's my major one.
Okay. We can do that. Everything goes to consent agenda except that. I do, uh, and this is the last, Ms. Kinzer, do you have any more to?
No, no.
Okay. Uh, the last point I want to just bring up in all of this discussion is I don't want us to go down the slippery slope of becoming a curriculum approval board because that's not, uh, something we don't want to get into, I don't think. But, um, if there's questions, we need to have them addressed. Other business, instructional low bids? Anybody want to address this? Somehow we've lost everybody. Uh, low bids, we just want to put these on consent? Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't hear any objections. Governmental procurement alliance personally cooperative? Is there any information that needs to be shared about that? Mr. Pearman, I believe has been absconded out into the hallway. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's cooperative purchasing agreement that.
Okay. Do we need to take any action on that, I guess is my question.
Yeah, I think it has to have board approval probably.
Consent or, okay. Transfer surplus buses, consent? Facility use. I know this was a discussion that has come up in the past. Could somebody go get Pearman and bring him back in here? Facility use. While we're doing this, I don't want to waste any time at the end. I will go ahead and update everybody. I have a meeting with Mr. Hickman tomorrow to discuss the evaluations. Uh, we'll be providing a summary and, uh, he'll have a chance to talk about it at the next board meeting. Just to give everybody an update on that. I think I did receive everybody's, um, evaluation. I was having some email trouble. Those of you that sent it, and I told you you didn't, uh, my emails all weren't getting through to my phone. All right. Mr. Pearman, welcome back. Mr. Moore, good to see you. Uh, could you talk to us about facility use?
Yes, sir. Um, a couple of things on here, and you have some attachments. Um, I've had a conversation with a few of you, um, about some things that have gone on. And y'all have asked some questions about problems or processes that we use, um, to allow outside groups to use our facilities. We, we've presented you three documents here, uh, just for some discussion and we'll take whatever you want to discuss off of this. We do currently have many groups that use our buildings, churches being the primary ones that are our main tenants. I think we have churches at four schools. We have one that is applying to use a sec, a, a, a fifth school right now. We talked to you about board policy. You know, we use the Facilitron, um, software where someone comes in, they, they request the usage of a building and through that, the principal can give the initial okay and, and allow that usage. Then my office, Mr. Gaines in my office manages the process where we verify that they have, uh, insurance. We assign fees, uh, and go from there. Couple of things have come up in discussion. One, uh, a couple of you, uh, attended the Columbia Dance Academy recital at Central High School and saw that it looked more like the Bridge Church than it did Central High School. We've taken steps in early June. We met specifically with the Bridge and developed a plan in which they were completely out of the building by the end of June. The last Sunday in June, they were all the way out. And now their, their process is that on Sunday morning, they move in and on Sunday afternoon, they move out. With that discussion, we visited with principals and reminded principals that they don't own those buildings. And they can't just give free rein to groups that come in and use them. And that no matter what's going on, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that's a school. Um, in the summertime, over breaks, there are always time that our kids, our teachers are going to need in that building. And it can't walk into and look like someone else has just, uh, taken up habitation in there and, and have lived through that. So we are working with them. They have a process. It has worked. Uh, we freed up a great deal of storage space there. We're working with the churches, uh, across our county. And so far, they, they've been receptive to that. So I wanted to address that, that first. Second thing is, and we've discussed this with you in the past, uh, the most recent discussion we had about fees was instituting a, a mandatory Covid cleaning fee. If you remember when that first started and we allowed buildings to open back up, we said, but you have to pay this. Uh, we've gotten away from that a little bit over the, the last few months as that has not become back to necessary. They're paying just the true janitorial cost that it comes from there. But we've had discussion with you guys in the past about fees, about waiving fees, which a lot of people have been very, historically, there was a lot of kind of, you can come use our building. We're not going to charge you anything. And then the district was paying for the building to be cleaned up. The district was paying a good bit in utilities. The district was paying for someone to open it and close it. Oftentimes that was maybe a maintenance man or a, a building operator that got overtime or comp time. And people were making those decisions. So the discussion that we were asked by a couple of you to bring to us was what do some other counties do? We attached Williamson County just for, um, discussion process, uh, because they're really the only one around us that we found had a formal plan like we did, um, where they named some numbers and things like that. But, uh, I, I can answer any questions. We were asked to put this on here. And, and I'll go anywhere you want this discussion to go, uh, and, and make any comments you have for us.
Mr. Moore?
So two things. I know, I know some of the discussion that was going back and forth was on, um, kind of being too free with, with some of the, with the buildings, you know, use of those. Um, I would at least, and, and this is why I like, you know, procedures in place that, that codify that. Because I had some concerns too, that I hadn't brought up yet, and I'll be glad to mention to you later, about some that were maybe taking some liberties as a principal to turn some things down that maybe could have been approved. Um, and I, I think addressing both of those can be done by just having some good procedures in place on this is how we operate this. And, and to go with the fees, um, I know when we, uh, for example, when we talked about out of county fees, that was a big discussion about, you know, what does it actually cost? Because that's my concern. I just want to make sure we're meeting our costs plus some wear and tear piece of that. I want to be fair about it, but I just don't want to ever be the district in, in the hole on that, um, when we do those things. And, and I don't know how that needs to look. And again, probably some procedures, I know that the board in the past has, has waived things kind of without thinking about that. But I think it might be important that when we're asked or when someone asks to waive something, that we have a better understanding of exactly what we're waiving. Because if somebody comes and says, hey, let's waive this and it, then there's no number with that. It's, it's easier to say, sure, we'll just waive it. But if you come to us and say, hey, by waiving this, you're, you're adding five thousand dollars worth of employee cost over the term of this agreement. All of a sudden, it, it's, you know, that's five thousand dollars that could be going to a student that we're, that is not because we're eating that. So I just want to be, I don't know how to address that in that regard, but I would think it may be helpful for us if we're asked to waive something that we have some discussions about how much we're waiving or, or kind of ballpark of that. Or maybe we should just not be waiving any of them.
Well, I have kind of just instituted the practice within our offices. We do not waive the, the usage fee.
Okay.
If they want to waive the site supervisor fee and one of their, their staff do it for free, that's fine. You're still going to have to pay to have the building cleaned, those types of things. I, I will tell you concerns and, and some of our renters aren't going to like having this. We have nice buildings that are cheap. You, you can rent, and, and our policy right now has been it's a hundred and fifty dollars for the lobby or the entire building. We, we've not differentiated between, or, uh, what you're using, what different portions of the building cost. If you looked at the Williamson County, uh, policy that we attached, they did. They said a gym costs this much. And a gym costs this much for high schools. A gym costs this much for middle. Uh, the auditorium costs this much. If you require, uh, someone to run the audio or the, or the, the lighting and then. If you require someone to run the audio or the lighting in the auditorium, it's this much more. And we've never done that. And that leads to probably the biggest thing that we fight with renters. And I will tell you that Spring Hill Middle, and they know this, is the worst place because it's right across the county line, and it's cheap. So we've had everything from Miss Teen Tennessee to every other kind of dance recital. They have, you've been to Spring Hill Middle, they have an awesome auditorium. Um, but what we run into is often they run into bad renters. People who want to come and, you know, kind of just set up shop for multiple days and demand. Um, Jacob here has been up there, Dave's been up there. They need someone to run the lighting or the audio, or they don't like the lighting or the audio. And we've really had to discuss with the folks at Spring Hill Middle, before you agree for someone to come into your building, you need to make sure that they understand what they're doing. That's not in policy right now, and that may be something that would be easier if it were in policy. We can put it in a procedure as well. Uh, that's the biggest thing. The other thing is this, we are year-to-year with everyone but the Bridge. We discovered in getting ready to talk to them about how much stuff there was, that there was a five-year agreement signed with the Bridge. Um, and this was prior to Facilitron. It was a paper agreement that Misty dug up, and it's a five-year agreement. We don't feel like we need to do that. I have put stipulations on how far in advance you can book our buildings. Usually you could book up to a year in advance. Through COVID, we cut it back even when we opened up to three months, to a month in some circumstances. We do treat outside facilities different than inside facilities. Um, the churches aren't going to like this, but this is my opinion, is that they get a whole lot of usage out of our building for relatively cheap price in every circumstance, even with our best renters. And some of our, most of our churches are great renters. But they're really getting a facility at very minimal cost compared to if they tried to rent that out publicly somewhere. Um, basically, for four Sundays, it's $600. Uh, and if you went to a building in town and tried to rent it, it may be thousands of dollars every Sunday. I don't know. Um, I know we're not interested in this becoming a moneymaker necessarily, where we make tons of money off of it, but I do feel at times that with the wear and tear that we see and with the in and out, that we maybe aren't covering, um, we're not covering ourselves in every situation. Now, site supervisors, and I know that that's been a question. We talked about, I wish Doug was still here. I talked with Misty today. They do turn in an extra duty form that we pay through payroll. Uh, they do pay taxes out of that, and we pay taxes out of that. That is given through their payroll. So at the end of the year, it is noted that they made that much money. So a site supervisor that supervises a church or a weekly event and receives payment for it, they do up their salary. Uh, and that's how we've done that. We do that in every situation, but it does reflect at the end of the year on that. And I know that was a question that y'all had as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howe.
So I don't have a problem with the way we currently do things. I do kind of have a problem with raising prices on existing organizations that do business, or I say business, that have meetings there. Um, they, these are our children, for the most part. These are our taxpayers. If this is an out-of-county group, yeah, I absolutely believe that we should be charging a premium to them because they didn't build Murray County Public Schools. They don't pay taxes in Murray County, other than sales taxes. They don't pay property taxes. So as far as an out-of-county group, I have no problem charging them a premium. I do have a problem charging, you know, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and groups like that an exorbitant amount of fee. Um, I have actually had Boy Scouts or Cub Scout groups at Collioka School numerous times with permission, with the approved forms. Um, and it's not that big of a deal. Um, luckily, we didn't have to pay anybody because I had enough teachers in my pack that they volunteered their time to be there to open and close the building. Um, we always cleaned up everything that we did. Um, that's just kind of part of being a scout. Um, so I mean, I do want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by our schools, but also want to make sure that these are taxpayers. These are groups that help our students, that are with our students, that are doing good things in our community. Um, so if we start charging every little group that comes in, I'm just, I mean, that's just that much less that goes to those children that are in those groups. So I don't mind charging appropriate fee, but I just want to caution.
Maybe the question we had as well, as this discussion goes, is the differentiation between nonprofit and for-profit groups. Um, Miss Teen Tennessee is a for-profit group. Um, a lot of the folks that ask to use the youth football leagues, they are our children, and while they may necessarily be a nonprofit, they're charging admission, that somebody's making money somewhere. Um, and it's not necessarily, you know, if you run a football game at Spring Hill Middle and you have even 200 parents that you charge $500, and it's a $150 usage fee, um, they're making money off of our facilities. And that's been a question that folks have had as well. If it's not us, if it's one of our ball teams doing it and sponsoring it, that's one thing. But outside groups that are making money. And I only bring that up because again, that conversation comes up amongst our ranks is, well, these are taxpayers, but are we to provide the facility for which they make their money?
Fundraising event is something completely different. However, you do have school organizations that are doing fundraising events. They're doing FFA spaghetti dinners and things like that. Uh, well, FFA is, we offer it at our schools, but it's a separate organization. So I mean, you kind of, you do get into that where they're trying to raise money for their organization. So I mean, it is a, it's not for profit, but it's a fundraiser. So I mean, we, you know.
But that does go into a restricted school account as well. It's handled through our books. What I'm speaking about is the request that we get is, hey, we run a youth football league, and we've been kicked out of another county. We'd sure like to use your fields. And sometimes-
So you're from another county?
Sometimes too.
$3,000.
Well, they'll say, well, sometimes, you know, you got kids from here. Uh, and again, I'm not sure where everybody wants to go with this. We brought it to you because it was asked, but this is the other thing is I understand what you say about sometimes people taking liberties about not approving things. But at the same time, if they've been a bad renter, I pretty much advocate, don't let them back in. That's your right to do that. And we have lots of folks that have proven at times to be bad renters. So in that policy, again, you tell us where we're going with this.
Mr. Lindsay, you have the last light.
Oh, my suggestion would be, I think my way of thinking, it appears is, agrees with your way of thinking. So I would suggest you bring us back a revised policy of what you think should be in there. Um, I think you understand this before I say it, but we're in the education business. We're not in the facility business. And, um, now, if we can make those two co-mingle, uh, then we're the better off for it. But, um, one thing I would like to see in there, and this is the biggest beef I have with it, and you said it, the reason we have people come and take up a bode in our facilities is because it's cheaper for them to do that than to go build their own facility. So, uh, you know, for $150, they're renting an auditorium that Mr. Hewitt left, that $150 a day at Columbia Central High School that might have cost us $4 or $5 million to build. I mean, it's a, um, and we could, you know, those examples are all over the county. So why would I go build a, why would I go replicate that and spend $2 or $3 million on a facility when I'm paying $150 a week? So it, I get that, but I think there ought to be something in there where we limit the number of times a certain group can use it, uh, just from an equity standpoint. Um, you know, we have, I don't mean to pick on churches, but we've talked about them tonight, but, uh, there's been churches that, yeah, well, that, and that they, you know, church over here may have a flood, and they need, you know, they have a water heater break or something, and they need somewhere for two or three weeks while they get their stuff straightened out. But there's nothing available because Church B over here, they got a five-year contract with us for $150 a week. So I would like to see us put some type of, um, limit to the number of times a group could use it in a specified period of time, whatever that may be.
I just need to add, and Jake may want to chime in on this. We have to be very careful with churches, especially five-year contracts because that can exceed the preferential treatment, which we could have some problems on liability. I know a lot of districts are moving to where they will only allow a church in a certain building for a year, and that's something I am researching with other districts, how they're handling that, because that can cause some liability on the backend, as well as I let this organization, but not that organization. So we need to approach this very cautiously in what we're saying. You know, we waived the fees for the Boy Scouts, but not the Girl Scouts. Guess what happens? So I just wanted to make sure I put that disclaimer out there.
Okay, Mr. Hooper has promised he will keep this short.
It really is just a statement, something I was thinking about. Um, I think regular church services presents a different problem than intermediate or periodical, and the fact that it forces us into an agreement in sorts that where the inevitability is allowing or not allowing, and that's a very uncomfortable position for me to be in. Uh, I don't think that's a position the school board, or any board in government, should be in. I think that the regular church services is something we need to address more so than anything. I think I'm fine with being an accommodation for people who are displaced or in need of temporary areas, but regular worship presents a problem that I'm just not comfortable, or even think that we should have the ability to do it in the first place.
So much for my last light policy. Ms. Parker.
Sorry, um, I really like the fact that in Williamson County's policy, they talk about, you know, putting their stuff first, and I think that's something that we need to make sure is very clear. Because quite frankly, if Central wants to have a program on Sunday and they need to put stuff on that stage, sorry, you can't have church there that Sunday. I mean, I think our kids have to come first, and, um, I think we, you know, if our renters know that, then, you know, we can maybe make some other accommodation if we needed to. But I also think this whole, like, whole facility for $150, we need to look at, um, age of our buildings, amenities at our buildings, all those things, and adjust accordingly so that we're getting fair market value.
Ms. Irvin.
Sure. So I agree that, you know, keeping fair market value, but to approach what Chad said, I just thought of this statement, I don't know if we could apply this policy or not to it, but maybe something to the effect of like nonprofit student or school-centered organizations that is independent of any like discriminatory practices like race, religion, et cetera, then maybe then we could waive the charges or keep it at a minimum. But then anything outside of that, have it a different, just to kind of protect like the Boy Scout, Girl Scout.
Okay, so yeah, just bring us something back for the board meeting on the third, or whatever date it is. Uh, under FYI, updated employee handbook, just want to let us know that? Or you don't, we don't need to discuss that in any depth, do we?
No, sir, not unless you guys want anything.
Nope, we don't want to.
Perfect.
Proposed employee dress code. I saw this on Facebook all over the place and got-
Yeah.
Just say something briefly about it.
Real briefly, is this is not something we're putting to effect this year. We're talking to the principals and teachers, and it sounds like we're going to move away from a district one and go to a school-based one and let it go from there. I think the only part of it, if we do have a district one, I just wanted to say, no yoga pants, that is all.
Okay. Moore, Mr. Moore.
Moore, you know-
No more, no more.
Yeah, I'd be honest, that statement of going to a school-based concerns me. And that's just from an equity standpoint for staff. Because I've always been, that's the concern I've always had, is we talked about this. I had quite a few people reach out to me, hey, this is a bad idea. I don't like this. I'm like, that's fine. There's things to be discussed there. And the comment that I kept getting was, why can't they just go reach out to the person who's doing the bad things? And my reply was always, well, how do you tell someone they're doing something wrong if there's not a list showing you what's right or wrong? You've got to start with that. And, but I really think, and this is, I'm going from the employee side of this, a fair dress code is the, that's across the board. Because I'm concerned, what we've had is where you do have individual principals, that could be great, or they could have their own views on something that ends up being unfair to our entire employees, staff, when you've got a disparity there in how they're treated between, depending on which building they're in. I would really like to see something that's something put together for the entire district. Now, maybe that's a more loosely things, and there's some specifics. I think there's some things that can be carved out. There's obviously some work to be done on that. But making this up to each individual principal, I think is a recipe for disaster. I think it needs to be for the district, just to protect our employees so that they can know, if I'm at this school, I'm going to get the same thing whether if I'm here or if I'm at another school. That's just, that's a fair thing for our employees to have expectations and know what they are.
And it is a work in progress, so it's-
Yeah, it's a work, and that's something that we'll definitely look at.
Thank you very much. Um, sir. Go ahead.
If y'all start talking about the dress code, then I'm going to have to speak up. So I'm happy not to talk about it tonight.
Yeah, this is not for discussion.
But I have a lot to say.
We don't really need to discuss dress codes tonight.
Okay. We don't have to.
Well, okay, we'll come back to it.
Mr. Chairman, just one correction. You approved for consent, uh, be it at packet 2207, the Making School Works PD.
Yes.
Uh, when we presented that, the schools were planning to go to high schools at work in person. They didn't go, they went virtual. So that resulted in a little more money that was available for us to use. So the, we want to change the memo. The cost of that will go up rather than $31,000, it will be $38.5. The funds are available, they were part of that grant, but it will adjust that to 38. We'll substitute the memo that says it's, we can leave both memos, but I just wanted to let you know that, that that is-
Just please make a note of that up.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. All right, I think we are wrapped up for our evening. Thank you very much for hanging in there for the discussions that we've had. See you at our August board meeting.